Starts when the sun goes down, right?
I got more than possible.
For this afternoon?
Four.
We're just concerned, yeah.
That's, that's justified.
Most Jewish holidays start at sundown?
I think so, yeah.
Many do, yeah.
What's that?
Many do.
One, two, four, five, six, oh, we're good.
And housing committee.
See all the taxpayers out there are friendly tonight?
Yeah.
I don't know. I got phone calls this week, like, I had something to do with it, I'm like, ah.
Really?
How are you?
You guys got a lot of calls this week?
Yeah, yeah, assessing's been really busy. Yep.
Mark.
How you doing?
I'm doing all right.
It's a bit busy right now, huh?
Yeah, it is, yeah. All right, well, it is 6:30, I will call our December 7th planning board meeting to order, and I will call the roll. Rebecca?
I'm here.
Phil?
President.
Neil?
President.
Mike?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Alternates, Zach Terrell, not present. Michael Bouchard cannot make it tonight, and Peter Julia. I believe we do have also a quorum of the HOP subcommittee, and I'll just read our, oh, and myself for the planning board, sorry. So myself for chair. Susan?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Matt is not here. Bruce?
Here.
Brian Chalmers, and Brian Eisenhower. All right. We do have a quorum. So, review of minutes from the November 16th meeting.
Want me to go first?
Sure.
So I noticed that there's a lot of incomplete sentences, some typographical errors and such. I think for the most part, though, the, I mean, we could spend a lot of time.
Get the red pencil out.
Correcting, but I think the substance is there that if we're okay with the minutes as is.
I, I, I think I'm in agreement.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as is. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, so the minutes of November 16th are approved. So, next up, are there any public comments not related to the business on the agenda, which would be the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance? Not about that. Communications received, Joseph.
Yes, a couple of communications received. So, as, you know, as the board's probably familiar, we occasionally get copied on survey plans that are recorded at the registry but don't meet the definition of a subdivision. We received two of them. One of them is related to a parcel that the board recently approved a boundary line adjustment on. This was the Faver, the Faver parcel out on Old Heveron Road, and then another parcel in the same area, but both had a recorded survey, so these will be put on file and given to assessing, but they have the certification of the surveyor that they are not a subdivision in accordance with statute and don't require action. But if anyone wants to take a look at them, I can pass them around, and they'll also be in the file at Town Hall. I do only have the one copy, though, so if I could get them back after, that would be great.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yes, that should be, that should be it for now.
Sounds good. Reports of committees, and we can probably keep this fairly brief. I'll just say a few things, first of all, about the, well, just the HOP committee, the subcommittee, the planning board, and we're still hard at work, and a lot of that work has led to where we are tonight with zoning amendments, and I think I'll just leave it at that. That's our housing committee that we've been working with on some of these zoning amendments, and so I'll just leave it there for now. I can say the Lake Freedom Planning Commission, we had our last meeting about a week or so ago, and of the, of the year, and through the short presentation and some brief discussion, not too much happened, and we won't be meeting again until the spring. Any new news from the CIP?
CIP, just kind of an update. We, the Budget Committee met with the Select Board on Monday for the first time, and we are now meeting with the various, the various department heads to go over budget because of the tax rate and everything. So they just want to, the Select Board really wants to just kind of make sure that everything is there, doesn't, that needs to be, and the capital improvement could have some changes. It doesn't mean that it's going to, but they, after they meet with everybody, they'll review it and see, there may be some changes.
Otherwise, everything's on track?
Everything's on track.
Sounds good. Anybody else, any other committee reports? All right. So, next up is pretty much our main event for the evening. New business, we have a public hearing on the proposed amendments to our zoning ordinance. We have eight amendments. So, I'm going to take a moment just to say a few words here, and hopefully many of you have seen the notice of this hearing, and perhaps it's why you're here, and seen the list of eight descriptions of those amendments. And you can find those descriptions and more full, complete text on the Town of Plymouth website or just by visiting the Town Hall. So, a few words of background here. So, most of these amendments, or pretty much all of these amendments, have to do with housing issues, and so because of the shortage of housing nationally as well as locally, we've been looking at housing, and we've been aided in that process by a Housing Opportunity Planning Grant, which is federal funds taken through the state. And we've been able to hire consultants, some of you know about this process already, and they have been absolutely wonderful in helping us through this process, in doing research on our, assessing our current needs, and looking at our zoning ordinance to see what our barriers are, and also talking with developers, talking with community members, talking with business members, and leading community discussions and meetings. Lots of outreach, and it's been really great, and we're thankful to this grant and the help from Barrett Planning Group to get all this work done. And so that's landed us where we are now with eight zoning amendments, which is quite a bit, and we're also even considering some further changes, but we didn't want to do too much in one year, just kind of take off a more manageable chunk. And so so if you have been, for example, just to say one more word about that, if you have been at some of the community meetings, especially the most recent one, where we talked about a Tenney Mountain overlay and an inclusionary zoning ordinance, we are still considering those, but there's more details to work out, and it's a lot for one year, so housing doesn't tend to get built too quickly in general, and it's better to take our time and do this properly than rush it. So, this is the first of our public hearings on these zoning amendments. We will likely have another one, which is what we're planning on at this point. I'm assuming we move things forward at this meeting on January 4th, I believe it is. Checking my notes here. That's correct, right, yeah, there it is, January 4th. So, just a little background, the zoning ordinance is our legally binding document for land use in Plymouth. So, we have our master plan, which is kind of a more broadly guiding document, which doesn't have any legal teeth, and then we have, coming out of all this outreach and our master plan and others, is we have this zoning ordinance, which is where we really set things into law. And so we're going to have these hearings, talk about the amendments that we're proposing to that ordinance, and get feedback, see where we stand, and hopefully push several amendments forward, ideally all of them, to town meeting in spring. And we'll, we'll see where we get after these hearings. And so, once I open the hearing, the way we're going to do this is we're going to go through each of the amendments separately, just to keep things organized, so we're not talking about eight different amendments at once. And I'll introduce each amendment and say a few words about what it's basically about, or office and clarification, and then members of the public will have opportunity to speak to those amendments. And when you come up to the podium there, which I'm happy to see is back, which was not at our last meeting, please identify yourself and tell us what you think about these amendments. And try to keep yourself to like three minutes, and if you need to come up again, we can probably accommodate that, it's not too full of a room this evening. And once we hear the public comments, the planning board will consider those and other feedback we've gotten, and whether or not we want to move each of these amendments forward to a second hearing. My guidance to the planning board would be that, based on previous discussions we've had for zoning amendments, that we try to move zoning amendments forward through two hearings, so anybody who wants to speak at the second hearing doesn't get closed out of that conversation, and we don't pull things during the first meeting if possible, would be my recommendation. If we do want to make amendments to those here, to those amendments, if we don't want to make changes to those amendments, it would probably be good to do them this evening, so they could be re-noticed with those changes for a second hearing in January. And I think that's about all I have to say to introduce the process here. So our first amend, oh, actually, you know what? It's so I'm going to open one public hearing for the duration of this discussion. It is 6:42, and I will open a public hearing. So I'm going to read the the notice that was sent out, and then I'm going to describe a little bit what the broader language of the amendments, of the full amendment, is all about. Create a new definition for dwelling attached single family. Amend the definition of dwelling multiple units who dwelling multifamily, describing a building to be occupied between three and six units. So a little bit of background here, we did a lot of outreach, and it seemed that a lot of people in town really liked the idea of having more townhouse-style construction, which we're calling here attached single family, which would be a building with separate units in it, separated by a wall, with their own individual entrance. So they're a single family, probably, can't really say, in many cases, they're probably ownership units. And so, this is one of the things a lot of people were stressing, the possibility of ownership. But we also heard from a lot of people who didn't necessarily, for various reasons, want a single-family detached home because of affordability issues, because of caring for grounds and such, and, so this, anyway, for lots of reasons, we see, we heard a lot of positive feedback about this style of building. And so we could regulate it more properly, we decided to create a separate definition for that, separate from standard single family, which now becomes single-family detached, as we were currently describing single-family homes. So we have single-family attached being added, single-family detached describing a separate, what used to be single-family housing in Plymouth. The multifamily definition, multifamily rather than dwelling multiple unit was more about a change of language, more so than a real kind of new definition to be added there, bringing it into more kind of common practice with most other towns that used multifamily as the description of this type of building. And we didn't change number of units or anything there, just a couple of words. And I think, unless anybody, oh, and some small amendments as well to open-spaced residential development, which we'll talk more about in a bit. But this is, this is just within the definitions here we're talking about. We're not really talking about how we regulate these yet, but if we're going to rename things, that needs to be in the definitions, and if we're going to create something new, that needs to be in the definitions. Does anybody on the planning board want to add anything before we take public comments?
The only thing I'd say is that the open space, the name of open space, wasn't that a clarification? Because we used cluster in one place and open space in another, and
Cluster and open, and open space.
So the goal was to unify it under, under the open space residential development.
Yes, so in various places, previously in our zoning ordinance, thank you, Phil.
Yeah.
Both of these terms were used, and it got kind of confusing because it was probably an amendment that was made at some point and didn't get reflected in another part, and, yeah.
Can I add something?
Yes.
So this amendment, like, I think all of the amendments except for, we're not doing the open space residential tonight, right?
There is something
No, sorry, the overlay zone, we're not doing that tonight.
We are doing, we are doing the fairgrounds overlay.
Fairgrounds, sorry, okay. So aside from that one, these are, all the amendments are either administrative and cleanup in nature, or specifically designed not to be making anything more restrictive. I think we can get lost in a lot of the sort of jargon and the confusion of what a zoning ordinance is, but really, this amendment and the next seven?
The vast majority of what's in there.
Are making things less restrictive with the idea that the state is dealing with a housing crisis that is likely to continue or going to continue, and trying to make sure that there is a diversity of housing types at different income levels, so people have places to live.
Thank you, Rebecca, and I agree with just about all of what you said. I will say, there are maybe a few small caveats to the making things easier for development, but we can talk about those, we can talk about those later. None of those are in this particular
Easier for, less restrictive in nature, so the idea is not to tell, to be making less, fewer things you can do on a piece of property, so.
All right, that being said, are there any public comments? If there are, please come up to the mic, identify yourself, and say what you need to say. We're doing one at a time, yeah, in order. So if you have a comment about another one, just hold off for now. Number one, just definitions.
Nick Mason, High Street. So in the single-family attached, the new terminology, if this was, you would still hypothetically, if a house has a common hallway but is essentially a duplex, it would still be a multifamily two-unit?
Or a two-family home.
But this would be, these dwelling, single-family attached, where it says private entrance, front and rear, that it, there's no common hallway. This is, like you said, townhouse, so you enter completely from the outside into your own unit?
Yes. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
We do have a few folks on Zoom.
I will say, if anyone's on Zoom and would like to speak to these, or to this particular amendment, please unmute yourself, and hopefully not all at once, but make your comments. All right. Let's turn it back to the planning board for a moment. How do we all feel about this amendment? I think it's pretty straightforward in many ways.
Can we, do you want to hold off action on board until after the public hearing?
I thought we were going to do, I was saying, we do one at a time, just leave the public hearing open. I think that is a fine thing to do.
Do we need to, is there any action needed if we're just going to let it sit until the next?
I think it would be good to make a formal motion to move it to the second public hearing. hearing.
I would, sorry, someone else is going to talk, I would make a motion that we move this to the next public hearing, with one quick edit to take in the number two, the two, T-O, before dwelling, make that lowercase, so it's a little more clear, from what we're making the change.
Where are you?
Right here.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Just to make it--
Oh, of course, yeah.
It's not even necessary in the motion.
I got it, yeah.
I could make my point and make a motion in one breath.
Okay.
I would second the motion with the change.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. This amendment number one will go to our second public hearing in January. All right, so we'll move on to amendment number two. This is Article III, Section 304 of our zoning ordinance. Again, I'll start by reading the text from the notice. Amend use table by updating names of certain uses for clarity. Change multifamily dwellings not exceeding six units from a special exception to a permitted use within the multifamily residential zoning district. Excuse me. Allow single-family attached dwellings up to four units as a permitted use in SFR, MFR, ACI, and VC, that's single-family residential, multifamily residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial, and village commercial, and by special exception in HC and ICD. And amend the provisions referencing parking for more than, less than, or equal to 125% of the minimum parking requirement to eliminate the internal conflict. I'll explain some of these in a moment, try to mouthful. Remove cluster residential development and replace with open-space residential development. Add footnote to the table of uses to refer to Article IX of the Plymouth subdivision regulations for regulations that apply in open-space residential developments. So a lot of this has to do with our table of uses, and which uses are allowed in various So some of these changes, for example, since we've added single-family attached, we now add that to our table of uses, since we added a use, yeah, I should define where it goes. And I just explained that that would be in single-family, multifamily, agricultural, commercial, industrial, village, commercial. If you're thinking about those, we have our residential zones, agricultural, downtown, village, commercial, basically. We changed the name, or we had, when we clarified and divided out, single-family attached, now we have single-family detached, that gets amended in the table of uses as well. Multifamily is another change of name, so basically all these things within definitions now have to be updated in the table of uses. There's this issue with less than and more than 125% parking, which was probably some kind of administrative error at some point, which basically requires special permission to do more than, and separately, less than 125% of the minimum parking requirements. And so basically, everything became like, you have to--
Special exception.
A special exception, yes. And, trying to just go through all of these. So the change of name from cluster to open-space residential development, if you're wondering what that is, we'll talk about that more a little bit later this evening, right now it's just a change of name, basically. And what we'll also talk about a little bit later in more detail is that we had to make a footnote to our subdivision regulations for the regulations applying to open-space residential developments, and for reasons we'll discuss in a little bit, we decided it would be a good practice, and we consulted with our consultants and others about this to move our regulations for that from our zoning ordinance to our subdivision regulations, which requires a kind of reference, a footnote in this section referencing that change. And, I think that's about it. Anybody else?
I'm having trouble following along when I look correctly at the amendments, I think I imagine everybody else has been dealing with something as that as well.
To go through this then--
I'm not necessarily seeing--
I'm not going to go through every line of it. So one of the changes is, I mentioned in the description, multifamily dwellings were not allowed by right without a special process in the multifamily zone, and we decided, in many ways that seemed like a no-brainer at this point, to make multifamily dwellings in the multifamily zone a by-right use. Not really changing, or not really, not at all changing, the number of units or anything like that, just making that by right in the multifamily zone. And, yeah, so now we have single-family attached and detached, attached units in residential zones, the ag-zone, commercial, industrial, village, commercial, these kind of townhouse-style buildings, would be allowed by right in those zones, up to four units in a building. So a single building with those four attached single-family units in them. And if you actually are looking at the amendments and how it relates to the zoning ordinance, under the miscellaneous section, it's where there used to be this reference to more than 125%, less than 125% parking, with special exceptions, like, all around, basically, and we decided to remove that, and the 125% and some other parking regulations are now dealt with in the parking section, which is a separate amendment.
So basically, bringing--
If any of that doesn't make any sense, please feel free to ask for clarification.
So I was just going to say that bringing some inconsistencies, say, between the cluster development and the open-space residential, bringing that in line, didn't we actually change the accessory dwelling unit to, wasn't there a CUP?
So, this is actually a contradiction in the old zoning ordinance--
Oh geez, okay.
Where it was permitted, and it was not somewhere else, and so--
Yeah.
It was already in the new form here.
So, and then just bringing some consistency and some sort of baffling things, like not allowing multifamily housing by right in the multifamily district.
That was, it was allowed in the one to four, but not--
Right.
More than four, so we made, it was permitted one to four, special exception for five and six, and we said permitted all the way through six.
Yeah.
I mean, generally making our zoning ordinance slightly less confusing.
And updating for those changes of definitions.
Yeah, the changes of definitions.
Yeah. All right, does anyone have any questions or comments about this amendment? Yes.
My name is David Kent, I live in Plymouth, and I do have some serious concerns about the page that you're now considering. And they are in several fronts, I'll try to confine myself to the three minutes, I understand you're predicament in that regard. First, as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, I want you to know that I am strongly opposed to doing away with the notion of a special exception in any zone. And the reason for that is, it gives the neighbors a chance to have input when somebody's going to change a use or do something different next door to them, or within the limits next to them. And I think that's important in a town. When you consider that the number-one thing that the people concerned when we go through the planning process is, is remaining, keeping the unique, small-town atmosphere in this community, to allow things to happen simply because someone owns a piece of property without regard to what happens to the neighbors. I think that's a mistake. Coupled with that, however, one has to look at what's now going to be permitted under your proposal. The one-family zone has been destroyed, there will be no one-family zone the way you have gone at this, and I believe that that will cause your amendment to fail. I think there are enough people left in this town who care about the community, that don't want to see the one-family zone taken away, which is now really a two-family zone, the way it's currently worded, and the way it will be with the accessory use. It becomes essentially a five-unit per building, when you consider the number of accessory units that can be added to a one-family house. Couple that with the diminishment of lot size, and you'll have overdevelopment in the current one-family zone. I think that's, I think that's just unforgivable. If you look at the places where you've eliminated the special exception, one, two, three, four, five significant areas, you've taken away the right of the neighbor to be heard when the property is going to be changed. There's no harm in letting the neighbors have a word about what's going to happen. The number of special exceptions that I can recall being denied can be counted on one hand in the last, I don't know, six, seven, eight years that I've been on the board? And those are where there was a good reason that the neighbors came out and protested against something that was going to get done. I'm not asking for a variance, which can be difficult, I'm talking about the special exception. I also believe that the way you've defined the accessory use as up to four units is a terrible mistake, particularly in the one-family zone.
Accessory use, or the single-family attached?
The accessory unit. If you read that and you couple it with your definition, you can have four accessory units and a one-family house in that zone. You have to couple those two pieces together the way you've designed them. I think that's a terrible mistake. I've used up my time, thank you very much.
Actually, David, if you can stay for a moment, can you clarify the special exceptions that have been removed? I'm just trying to count them as you were mentioning the five.
Accessory dwelling unit, permitted.
Yep.
Multifamily dwelling not exceeding six units, permitted. Open-space residential development, permitted. Single-family dwelling detached, permitted. Single-family dwelling attached, not exceeding four units, permitted. That's five special exceptions that have been removed from the ordinance. All in areas where people would have a concern. I understand that things in the agricultural zone could be much broader, but here in the downtown community, the neighbors should at least have a thought about what's going to occur. Thank you.
If I can just, Rebecca, did you want to respond to this?
I was just going to say, anything bigger than two units is going to come before the planning board as a site plan review.
Yes.
So there will be opportunities, it might, it won't go to the zoning board because it's not, a special exception isn't needed, but it will come to the planning board--
I don't believe that's the way the ordinance reads, if you read it carefully. Accessory units are allowed without a permit required.
No, we're talking about the multifamily, I believe.
Yeah, anything bigger than two units.
So the multifamily by right in the multifamily zone, it's true that it wouldn't be open to public comment before the zoning board, but it would still have to go through site plan review before the planning board. And the public would have the opportunity at that time to comment. The accessory dwelling unit, I do not believe, and Joseph, if you want to clarify or anyone else, the language that we allow up to four ADUs.
The language does say, only one ADU shall be permitted on a lot that has existing, in what's in here.
Yeah.
That's in amendment number five, is the accessory dwelling unit amendment.
I just wanted to make sure and clarify before I spoke.
The accessory dwelling unit, Mr. Chair, is also limited to a detached, single-family dwelling.
Yes. So, the accessory dwelling unit is one, and it's limited to detached, single-family dwellings. The four comes from the attached, single-family. And, so for the accessory dwelling unit, the change is from a conditional use permit, where we've come before the planning board, to a permitted use, and that is a little bit less public input in that particular case. And members of the planning board, I think, felt, we were starting to get a lot of these, and they felt very routine in most cases, and it would still have to go through standard--
Building permit?
Permitting, anyway, and we felt in that case it made sense. And, I'm just trying to think through each of these that you mentioned.
The Zoning Board of Adjustment has met twice this year.
Okay.
There's plenty of room.
No, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. Do any other members of the public, would any other members of the public like to speak? So we heard from David Kent in quite some detail, do any of us have any follow-up questions or concerns from that conversation, or those comments?
I have a couple of comments to make.
Yes, Mike?
So yeah, the planning board heard four or five requests for accessory dwelling units, there was no feedback or concerns with the public, so we kind of, in our little shell, thought, ah, I guess that makes sense for all of them to be similar. But when you do think about it, the neighbors really should have a chance to come forward and in a special exception--
Currently, it's a CUP.
Huh?
Currently, it's a CUP.
Yeah, I would almost think, in the single-family residential zone, Plymouth has fought hard to try and keep their single-family zone, single-family, and it's got a history of that over the last, I'm not sure how many years, to keep it that way. And, I think this needs a lot more, lot more analysis from the board before we send it to a vote, we kind of just talked amongst ourselves, but that particular portion didn't really get a lot of feedback in any of the community meetings that we had. My second concern is, I do not remember, in the uses residential, in the single-family residential zone, it talks about single-family dwelling attached, not exceeding four units per building, so we're talking about three units in the single-family zone that would be just permitted. I don't remember talking about that, and maybe it's, maybe we did many times, but that really, all of a sudden catches me. I don't remember this, and I'm concerned about that in the single-family zone.
So I think we have talked through this quite a bit, and I think what is important to remember in the single-family zone is a couple of things. First of all, it extends all the way up Thurlow, there's a variety of different neighborhood types, and the minimum lot size is really, a lot of the dimensional requirements change based on the size of the lot. And so I think a lot of the, if we're, a lot of people, a lot of times when we talk about single-family residential, we're talking about the immediate downtown neighborhoods. I think there's a lot of things that will get excluded from those smaller lots, just by the size of those lots and what the setbacks and, and minimum, or maximum lot coverage can be. So, I think, putting more barriers to accessory dwelling units, and attached, my gosh, I got this confused, the single-family dwelling attached in areas of the single-family residential that aren't in those more dense downtown neighborhoods, I think we're really limiting things.
I would also add about the, first of all, the accessory dwelling units, this was one of the questions in our very well-attended community meeting we had this fall, and we didn't have a lot of discussion, although in every single group at that community meeting, it was mentioned, and most people didn't really seem to mind. And that was a pretty large turnout with a lot of feedback we got from those groups. And, it's true that we didn't hear a lot, and yet each one of those groups did mention and then talked about it, and for the most part, we didn't hear a lot of concern about that. So that really did come up in our public outreach, as well as our discussions in this group. And, I mean, at some point, we do have to draw a line, like what is permitted by right, and we can't have everything be a special exception or a conditional use permit. And, from the discussions that we've been having on the planning board for a year now, almost, I think, we've been talking about making them by right, even separate from the housing study. And, the work we did on the housing study, just to ease the process for people trying to go through this while still having to go through standard permitting and all that, on this committee, the housing committee, discussions with the community, for most of us, it does make sense. And as far as the single-family detached goes, I could understand concern, as Rebecca was saying, there are still dimensional requirements for having more, more units. So you probably would not find them on the smaller lots closer to downtown, but a bit more further out as single-family dwellings, single-family attached dwellings, but still single-family. And we heard a lot from people who, A, just by the numbers, looking at the market the way it's been and is likely to be for a while now, can't afford a single-family detached house. And a lot of people are just priced out, and this offers a more affordable opportunity. And if you look at some of the already existing kind of townhouse-style units in town, they're quite popular, and a lot of people are looking for similar alternatives that are single-family, lower-maintenance, attached units. And so it seems like there's a need here that we were listening to that drove a lot of this discussion, and it has been discussed. And I understand if you have a concern with it and don't like that decision, but it didn't come out of the blue, out of nowhere.
So I have a follow-up question for Joseph. If, Joseph, that part, which is on the first, the first amendment, if people don't like that one part, the whole amendment fails, correct?
Yeah, it would be the whole amendment.
Yeah, so that's, you might want to, I don't know, it's, it'd be interesting to find out what happens at the next hearing just concerning that one section of the First Amendment, which is just like...
The First Amendment or the amendment we're talking about right now?
The First, the amendment we're talking about now.
If we add the definition, it doesn't mean it's going to be used anywhere. It's just adding a definition of the First Amendment.
I'm sorry. Amendment two.
Oh, okay.
Amendment two.
Never mind.
So I think when we're talking about preserving local character and maintaining the rural character of the town, allowing for greater density in some areas of town, I think is one solution to protecting our rural nature of an area like the agricultural zone. You know, we look at, the ag zone is really kind of a catch-all and anything goes out there, and if that's the most permissive place, that's where a lot of the development's going to happen, and it's going to look sprawly, and it's going to be a little less contiguous and neighbor-hoody and things like that. I think this offers a solution to put density in areas, in some areas, that can take a little more density and maybe take some of the pressure off, off the ag zone for being the catch-all where all the sprawly development might happen.
And allow for houses that are actually affordable for people. I mean, it's really hard to afford some of the housing types we have that some people, you know, like, single-family detached.
I can make a quick comment here from online if that's okay?
Yes, please.
You should have talked about making things less restrictive and more affordable, and I apologize if I missed.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Absolutely, Donovan McParkdale upon Merrill Street.
Thank you.
Sure. You know, the rise of HOAs, as these come into play, I would imagine the costs are going to be significant. It would probably, there's a chance they're going to net the same costs, and then the restrictions on your housing also go out the window, so it'll likely be more restrictive with no real democratic process for how to get that resolved.
And you're referring to a single-family detached, like kind of townhouse-style development?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Which is a concern I do understand, and in fact, a lot of our new development in single-family detached as well is governed by associations and such at this point, and...
So it would be interesting to see the cost justification of those. You're touting this as a cost-saving initiative. You factor in the HOA charges, I'd be very interested to see if that is still the case where people are finding affordable housing or if it ends up being roughly the same.
And as I say, part of it is cost and part of it is an actual preference for these among many people. Some people who want to age in town here, others who just don't want to bother with the yard and so forth, that we heard from a few different categories of people that really seem to like this type of development.
Yeah, I mean, we're not requiring that anyone develop in a particular style, but if we're simply providing an opportunity, and if the developer chooses to put covenants, restrictions, or, you know, other obligations on that development to facilitate neighbors getting along, that's, that's their choice. And it's probably hard to make it work without that, but, you know, the cost incurred there is a decision of the people who are in that association.
I think that's also just one avenue to apply some of this. It's not, that's not, it's not just opening up the door for some type of development that's going to require some homeowner association, you know, it could just be an ADU in somebody's backyard or a detached, a single-family dwelling attached, just two units on a property.
Sure, it sounds like it could be, and they could do this. We don't really know, is my point.
Thank you.
So we need to figure out as a board if we're going to, if we want to make any changes to this before it goes to a second public hearing or move it, move it as-is.
Understanding that if we move it to a second public hearing, we really, at that point, shouldn't make any more changes that are substantive unless we want to try to squeeze in a third public hearing later in January, which I think is technically possible, but not revisable.
We'd have to look at the timeline.
I think we need to be able to, maybe at the end of this meeting, we can just think if there's any sub-changes that we make, say, to like the ADU amendment, that maybe we need to come back and make a couple of votes in the, we just need to make sure there's not any cascading changes that need to happen and things that we've already discussed.
All right. Can we table a vote on amendment two and move on with amendment three?
Are you making a motion?
I feel like if we, if we want to make changes, sorry.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, I think the agenda is your discretion.
We don't really have to make a motion to do that, I suppose. We can just hold off on it.
So if there are changes we want, we would like to make in this amendment, we should probably talk about them now while we're fresh instead of waiting to come back to it at the end of the night. I don't thi, I would like to just move on.
I would like to move on.
And we can always re-motion something later.
So I would just make a motion that we move this to the second public hearing as-is.
Okay. I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
I have a little bit. I think that if we move this to the second public hearing, there's a chance that this may not happen, just to let this board know. If we make some palatable changes, it helps everything.
And what, can I ask you what you describe as a palatable change here?
I would say the single, because of the history of this town in the single-family zone, I've already said it once, they've, the single-family zone has fought for that zone so hard over the years, and they're finally getting a chance to rebuild it again with the college kids moving back into the dorms. And I see this as another assault, and I would say, I would say no more than three, no more than, not to exceed, not to exceed two units per building.
So in that case, we would just, wouldn't that mean we just remove the single, I'm so confused about this. Okay.
And I would also say...
Would that be across all zones?
In the single-family residential zone.
What about a special exception in the single-family residential?
I would say probably not.
Special exception would allow for some of the outerlying parts of the single-family zone to potentially get them where it wouldn't be as out of character and, as I think you're just trying to describe it, and still reserve the ability to create them if the requirements for a special exception were met.
But we also are talking about the single-family residential zone where it exists, not within walking distance of the village commercial, and if a unit comes down or a developer thinks that's a great building, maybe it'd be better if I could build a three or a four unit there, they might do it, and it would change the character of the entire neighborhood.
If the lot size is...
If the lot size is, yes.
And if they, if Rebecca was saying, if they would, at that point, get a special exception, and there might be a special exception criteria that, or just existing criteria that would make that difficult as opposed to further out in the single-family residential zone.
If it's a special exception, it's pretty easy to get. It's not like a variance. I would be concerned about that failing amendment two, and as well as a permitted use for an accessory dwelling unit without going for a special exception. Those two things, I think, makes all the difference, and I appreciate Dave bringing that to the attention of this board.
I would personally be okay with the special, I know it's not what you're saying, but I would be okay with going, single-family attached in the single-family residential by special exception, which would put a bar for getting permission to do it based upon the standard criteria of a special exception.
I would be fine with that as well as the ADU as a special exception. I'm fine with...
No, just to bear in mind, board members, the ADU now is a conditional use permit.
Yes.
So, yeah, what you're saying is it would make it more difficult to have an ADU in the single-family if we were to go to a special exception?
I think it's essentially the same thing, it's just which board they're going to.
Yeah, I'm just saying where you already have a conditional use provision...
We do.
For accessory dwelling unit, you know, maybe you want to just keep that for a district where you don't want to admit it as a right.
I think the issue is workload for the board, and the ADU business before us has become overwhelming, and it sounds like there's some room on the ZBA's capacity.
Got it.
Yes, yes, the planning board has been talking all year about the CUP for the ADUs, and because they started, they've become kind of difficult to actually get business done at our business meetings because of the number that we've seen this year.
I see.
Yeah. So would you like to speak? If so, please.
Bruce Wickett. I believe the state of New Hampshire just made ADUs by right. I think that was one of the discussions that we had in one of our outer, in one of our meetings. A developer had said that we can't deny if they don't meet, if they can fit with inside the lot, with inside all state, you know, parameters, we can't deny them. So by putting something in where we have to jump through hoops, the only thing they can be really checking is, do they meet the guidelines for the space?
That's all we're really asking at this point, anyway.
Okay, I mean, that's...
I think we can do it, I'm pretty sure we can do it as special exception, we just can't make it a not, a non-permitted use or not allowed or whatever.
And I don't mind, like, having people come in and have to ask, because I appreciate a neighbor wanting to, you know, have a concern. I just want to make sure that it doesn't become huge hoops to jump through. That was one of the biggest, you know, discussions we had in our group, was this is very common. It is a way in which families can grow with inside their own space. Multi-generational living is becoming more and more popular, and it's a way in which we can increase the number of people in town without, so I just want, don't want to make it too many hoops to jump through versus, I think, what Mike was saying about attached dwellings, you know, between four coming down to two. I think two is more palatable for many people that might be on Thurlow Street, that might not want a four-unit condo put next to their house. I think, you know, some sort of special exception or something might, might want to be added there.
I just asked Joseph for clarification. There haven't been any new laws passed, have there, about ADUs?
There's the current, the current law, which was passed around 2018.
Yeah, but this, which is what allowed them to be mandated, that you have to allow them, but you're going to allow a CUP or a special exception.
Correct, you do have to allow them in some way. You can choose how...
But so nothing's changed since then?
I think, I would prefer to see these as permitted and not special exception. I think what we're trying to do is trying to make a more passable amendment.
Yes.
I have some concerns that we've gotten to this point, and we have, you know, that we're talking about these things at a public hearing instead of, you know, the many meetings we've had about this, but I am certainly willing to think that if we present at the next public hearing, making in the single-family residential, the accessory dwelling unit a special exception, and that gives, butters the chance to comment, and then the single-family dwelling attached, instead of changing the units per building, I would suggest moving that to a special exception, and I think our special exception criteria do offer some guidance to, to structures. But, I mean, I guess I say that, but I also realize, anything bigger than two units is coming to the planning board anyway, so it's going to be going through our process.
As a site plan review...
As a site plan review.
But this is saying, even the right to do it would have to come separately.
Yeah.
Which might make it more palatable for some people. I mean, it would still need a site plan review, yes. And, and the reason for changing the ADU accessory dwelling unit from...
Conditional use.
The conditional use before the planning board to a special exception primarily would just be our capacity to actually just handle all these ADUs that we're getting at this point.
To maintain that a butter interaction, follow the special exception criteria, but not bog down this board in many ADU applications.
I get that, I...
I actually do think it's more appropriate for it to be a special exception than a conditional use permit.
I like the idea of it personally as a permitted use, but I'm willing to go along with that.
Could you give us an idea of how many ADU applications you're seeing?
How many this year is up, Joseph?
Five this past year.
We've had five this past year?
Thank you.
And it's also, that was our only CUP, so it's not something that we're, we're doing regularly as a board, so it, it makes sense to shift that.
I'm willing to unmotion my motion, my second, if you're willing to unmotion your motion.
I'm going to amend my motion to amend the amendment, to change within the single-family residential, make accessory dwelling unit a special exception, and make the single-family dwelling attached not exceeding four units per building a special exception.
I second the change.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mike?
I still think that in the single-family zone, it should be no more than two units. And my reasoning for that is, when I went to Manchester and we had the housing conference, it was talked about changing the single-family zone and adding some duplexes. They did say, mention triplexes, but it was mainly palatable to add, it would, not, I think they felt it was more palatable, they pushed the duplexes more in the single-family zone, not as much in the triplex, and I think Judy might be able to say a little bit about that as well.
If you would like to, Judy?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, not to debate it, the guy's presentation was about, you know, recovering triple-deckers. That really was the thrust of the presentation, but this is a policy issue. I think, you know, if the board is comfortable allowing more types of residential forms in the single-family, the traditional single-family district, you know, you can take it out, you can make it a special exception, you know, you could reduce it to two, as Mike has suggested, I guess I'm just wondering what happens with two-family at that point? But it's a policy decision, and, you know, Mike, I completely agree. I mean, the fellow you're referring to was talking about allowing more housing. You know, his interest in kind of restoring the triple-decker may not have been necessarily appropriate for Plymouth, but I think the point was, you know, removing barriers where it makes sense. And that was sort of the basis on which this evolved, so you just have to decide what you think is most appropriate for that zone.
All right.
May I ask for a clarification?
Yes, you may.
I spoke about the single-family zone.
Yes, you did.
As I understand reading this document, a single, as it is now, a single-family dwelling attached not to exceed four units plus an accessory building...
a single, as it is now, a single family dwelling attached not to exceed four units plus an accessory building is five units.
I, I. Accessory dwelling units can only be on a single family.
Pardon me?
Accessory dwelling units can only go on a single family, right?
A single family detached.
Detached, detached, yes.
So you couldn't put, you couldn't put an ADU with single family attached. You couldn't have them both in the same.
You can only do an ADU on a single family detached.
Right.
Yeah, I guess what I'm not understanding is you can have the attached four units, is that correct? And you could then have an accessory.
No, you can't.
Why not?
You can only have a, an ADU when there is a single family detached house.
Is that in the?
It'd be an ADU.
Yes, it is.
All right, is there any further discussion?
There's a section for ADUs.
Is there any further discussion from the board about this motion on the table right now?
So I am considering Mike's concern and thinking maybe that we should not allow single family attached in the single family residential.
I think if we want to pass this amendment, I think you're right. I would like to allow.
I mean, it's, it's still available through variance if somebody wants to go that route.
Well, they're probably not going to get it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think it should be, I'm willing, I'm willing to talk about the number of units.
Can we add specific special exception criteria?
If we eliminate single family attached from the single family residential, make it not permitted, you could still do a two family there, which I think gets at Mike's intent.
Yeah, right.
And you know, two families still by special exception in the single family residential. And I think in hindsight, in, in, well, thinking about it more completely since we met last, I, I think it's probably better to go that route. If somebody has a five acre parcel in the single family residential and they really want to put in a multifamily or, you know, four unit, they can, they can still seek a variance if they.
Which they're probably not going to get.
Yeah, I agree, they're not going to get a variance.
This is why I wonder if another alternative might just be to have more specific special exception criteria that would take these sorts, I, I can imagine some places in single family residential where this would be really nice and desirable to the entire community. And I can imagine some places where it would not. And.
And just we would need the special exception criteria in this zoning ordinance.
I can't imagine, I mean, the, the smallest lot, you, you would need to do this as a five eighths, five eighths of an acre. I can't imagine five eighths of an acre supporting four single family attached units comfortably in the single family residential.
That's based on what the next.
That's based on the area use tables, which allows for 10,000 square feet for the first unit and 5,000 for each additional. So 20, you know, 1,500 for the, the second, third and fourth units and 10,000, 15, so, you know, 25,000 square feet for, for units, unless I'm reading that wrong.
So, so what, you know, what you might consider, because I think unless it's a fairly simple change, I'm not sure how much rewriting of some of this stuff at a more complicated level you want to do between now and a second hearing, but you know, if the board is uncomfortable with this, could just make it not allowed in the single family residential district in this round of amendments. And we can provide you perhaps with some additional special exception criteria that you could consider another year.
I like that, I like that discussion.
Reasonable.
I think, I think our goal is to
Yeah.
get as much of this through and approved as possible and not lose a lot of this work because there's one piece that, that maybe voters will find distasteful.
I would agree.
Okay.
Only understand, totally get it.
Third crack at your motion?
I would like to make another amendment to my amended motion on this amendment. I would like to change the single family dwelling attached not exceeding four units per building in the single family to a, just a a line.
A dash, not permitted.
Yeah, not permitted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And I will second that.
And, and ADUs are still going to be special exception?
Uh, yeah.
In single family residential, I think that's what you said.
Yeah, that was the, the second revision to the
Okay.
motion, right?
So just to clarify, as it is written with the change of ADU in SFR going to special exception and single family dwelling attached no longer as a permitted use in, in SFR?
That's correct.
Yep.
It's fine.
I would make.
Okay, one, one quick comment.
As long as you guys are like reinventing the wheel.
If you want to, I don't, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but.
You know, this is just for context, I realize you guys will have a lot of three letter acronyms and jargon and stuff like that here, but just the very term, single family dwelling attached, that could hypothetically have four families living in it. I, I realize you're trying to use common terminology, but that, that, that's a mouthful and it's confusing to the lay person trying to make sense of this.
Townhouses.
No, I, I mean, I understand it, but if you were to.
That's why we put a definition in.
If you were to just say it to somebody, it would be hard, like that's, that's not.
Fair enough.
I agree, I've been stumbling it over and all, over and all evening.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any further comments?
Do you want to explain what it is, please?
The motion and the second is to move amendment two forward with the changes that accessory dwelling units would be by special exception in the single family residential zone. And the single family attached not exceeding four units per building would not be permitted in a single family residential.
Right.
And otherwise, everything as written.
You could come up with some fun acronyms to make it even more clear.
And then this one gets a.
Fraud.
Yeah. Siften.
All right, further discussion?
Eliminating.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hello, everyone?
Not paying attention?
Opposed?
Sorry, I was, I was for.
And abstentions. All right, so the motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
No, no, this one.
Article, amendment number three. I'm just looking at my notes here, okay, here we are. Trying to keep all my papers sorted out.
So it's still, it's still permitted in these zones.
So side discussions, please?
Sorry, we're just clarifying.
Okay. So amendment number three, which is article three, session 304. I'm just going to read this again, it's quite long. Change the dimensional standard table to reduce the minimum required road frontage. I will just ask you ahead of time, these all have to do with, I think mostly at least have to do with dimensional requirements for lots. Change the dimensional standard table to reduce the minimum required road frontage for a lot in the single family residential and multifamily residential where offsite sewer is present from 100 feet to 75 feet and reduce minimum front setbacks in the same zones to 15 feet or the average of surrounding residential lots within 300 feet, but not less than five feet or 10 feet respectively. Add a separate setback table for uncovered parking spaces and reduce the minimum parking setbacks in some districts. Change minimum lot sizes to a consistent unit of measure and replace the lot area per multi-unit building table with a consistent framework for additional square footage per unit over one differentiated by district. Where offsite water and sewer is available, reduce minimum lot size in single family residential to 10,000 square feet and multifamily residential to 7,500 square feet. Remove dimensional reference to cluster residential development and add footnote to refer to article nine of the Plymouth, Plymouth subdivision regulations. Switch lot size requirements to a builder's acre standard where one acre is replaced with 40,000 square feet and a half acre is replaced with 20,000 square feet. A little bit of background here. As we've been looking at our zoning ordinance and something that's been apparent to us for quite a long time now, many of the lots in our, especially our single family residential and our multifamily residential are out of conformity with our zoning ordinance. In other words, you could not build on those lots today. And so part of what this does is bring a lot of our lots, a lot of lots words, a lot of our lots back into conformity with our zoning ordinance, others that's a whole lot closer to conformity with our zoning ordinance. So what you see in the zoning ordinance matches what you see on the ground. So that's part of what it does. In doing so, we're also encouraging a historic pattern of development that guided a lot of our most cherished parts of our residential districts where lot sizes were traditionally smaller. Setbacks were traditionally smaller and were basically saying we'd like to see more of that style of development. A lot of the public really likes those neighborhoods. And additionally, it also lowers barriers by just creating smaller lots and smaller setbacks to make development a little bit easier for people and perhaps marginally at least more affordable as well by reducing lot sizes. In practice, what this means is currently any, anywhere, for example, there's a lot of numbers here to go through and I'm not going, I'm not going to mention every one of them. I'd be here all night, but for a few examples, currently you need a half acre to build in the single family residential. Most lots in that zone are smaller and this would allow people to build in what is basically about a quarter of an acre. 10,000 square feet. It also means.
Provided they have water and sewer.
Provided they have water and sewer, thank you for the clarification. It also means if you look at our current zoning ordinance, we're dealing with acres in some places, we're dealing with square footage in other places. And it can get kind of confusing and this would just bring us all to a standard unit of measure. So everything is just a square footage on the builder's acre of 40,000 square feet, nice round number.
So some, some clarification that it really aren't changes, but the numbers themselves look like they're changing because we're using a consistent unit of measure for the area dimensions.
Um, setbacks were pulling down to 15 feet and where neighboring houses within 300 feet, I think it is right, are, might, might be even less than that.
That's just in the single family and the multifamily.
Yeah. If you, if neighboring houses are less than that, which a lot of the historic buildings are, basically you can match your neighbors. So you can't just randomly go less than 15 feet, but where.
If your neighbors are all at 10, you can go to 10.
You can go to 10, exactly.
But if your neighbors are zero, you still have to go to five.
Exactly. And anything else worth? Parking setbacks reduced to five feet on the side and back. And there's a little bit greater lenience here as well. If you look at the area dimensions continued table, in all the 20,000, 5,000 square feet listed there and all those numbers, to allow a little bit more. Little is a rather vague term, it allows them more density, but not a glaringly large amount in my opinion. And I think that's about what I have on this one as a kind of summary. There's a lot of numbers here to go through, but hopefully you've had a chance to look at those.
But the gist of it, if I can understand.
The gist of it is what I.
Is that if, if we're rounding down slightly from quarter acre to 10,000 square feet, but none of the values in the table have changed other than that, that small percentage drop.
I think a couple actually might have changed a little bit.
The two that really change are the single and multifamily where there is water and sewer.
Okay.
Adding that quarter acre option, which is currently not.
And I think the threshold for an additional unit has also gone down a little bit.
Yeah, it's been replaced with this consistent sort of, you have your base lot size and then there's an additional amount of square footage per additional unit.
And to give, to give some examples that Joseph, for example, came up with, looking at one of the streets where a couple of us live, you like counted up like what, six lots along that street? They currently have six different houses on them. And by current standards in our zoning ordinance, you could today build one house on those six lots. And that's like historic. And that's historic downtown and a nice neighborhood that people really like. And if you built there today, you could build one house on those six lots. So we're trying to get a little bit closer to what it, what it used to be basically in terms of a development pattern before zoning. Or even closer to the what was in some previous iterations of the zoning ordinance.
I mean, just for discussion sake, you know, looking at the area use tables, if you're looking at the multifamily residential with municipal water and sewage, you could theoretically put a four unit attached, single family, four units on 15,000 square feet. You know, 7,500 square feet for the primary unit plus three units at 2,500 each.
But not in a single family anymore.
No, but in multifamily residence, in the multifamily zone. So, you know, I, I do think that does provide good opportunity for developers to build new affordable housing that would be a good place for younger families, professionals. I, I think this is really.
And then the character people really do like, it seems.
I think there's good opportunity.
Well, I think this also preserves the character of these neighborhoods.
True.
That it's, you know, that we're trying to make sure that whatever, if there's some redevelopment, there's been, you know, in the single family, I can think of four different houses that have burned in the past 15 or 10 years that, you know, can, these sites can get redeveloped in a way that's consistent with the neighborhood.
Right. And I, you know, there are other examples of, you know, the setbacks where, you know, there are currently homes being built according to existing setbacks that look really out of place because they're 30 feet back and their neighbors are 10 feet from the road and just, you know, I think that the reduction to setbacks is actually going to make for more consistent, uniform neighborhoods. I think it makes it more appealing.
So with that, are there comments from the public about this amendment?
Only one.
Yep.
The, I believe it would be an error to have the side setback for parking reduced to five, that's less than a car width close to the neighbor. If you're going to do that, do it with a special exception or something. The neighbor at least ought to know there's going to be something that close to his property. And in a special exception, you can do things like put up a screen, put, put up a bush, do something. At least there's some level of permitting that goes on for that narrow thing. I can understand there are circumstances where you might want to have it so close. Okay, come and get a special exception. I think it's only fair to the neighbor under those circumstances.
So we'll talk about that, I, I just want to, before we do, I mean, I'll talk about, I'll mention why this decision was made to put it in the ord, in the, in the proposed amendments in this way. A, it kind of relates back to, again, that kind of historic character. Many of the driveways currently in the single family are like right on the property line. Which is actually, this is giving us a little bit more of a buffer than we have historically because we realize probably today, we don't have the stomach for putting it right on the property line as it was often done historically. And by encouraging these, a driveway to be so close to the property line within five feet without going through too many hurdles, it encourages a builder, a new homeowner, building a house, a developer, to have an easier path to parking next to the house. And as opposed to in front of the house. And so this is the like logic that was going through our mind as we were proposing this. And I appreciate your push for a special exception to get public input on it and a butter's input.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, just to point out that in the parking regulations that we proposed changes to the parking section, there is a requirement for a minimum landscape buffer of five feet next to a lot line, so the five feet is not just a five foot strip. There is a screening requirement.
Thank you.
Which may not be sufficient, but I just want to make sure people understand that that is there.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public?
Neil has one.
Neil?
I, I didn't mean to cut in on.
That's fine.
I'm, I'm concerned about the 40,000 square feet required for septic disposal systems.
That's just for a lot with onsite water and sewer or onsite well and septic.
Right, you, you, that's below the standard for the DES requirements.
This is for the minimum lot size, not for the.
Well, if you have a 40,000 square foot lot, you can't put in a septic system. If you have.
40,000 square feet is just under an acre.
On-site water.
I mean, it's, it's currently what we have is one acre.
Right, 40,000 feet is less than an acre.
By a hair.
Forty-three, five, sixty.
Is it, is it, is an actual acre the minimum?
Right. It should be changed to forty-three, five, sixty.
I, are you talking about showing the, the 4,000 square foot area?
No.
Are you talking about showing the 4,000 square foot area that's required for subdivision approval?
I'm talking about design approval for construction.
Oh, okay.
In order to put a septic system on a lot with onsite water, you've got to have forty-three, five, sixty.
Okay.
So I would change it.
Okay.
Oh, I think what we were trying to do was to get a uniform metric into this table. The reality is that if somebody needs 43,560 square feet to accommodate a septic system, it doesn't matter what the zoning table says because they're still going to have to have a lot that's 43,560 square feet, or they won't be able to put a septic system on if in fact that is the rule. So I don't think you need, I don't think it's a zoning issue as much as it is a septic system requirement.
I think it's misleading though.
But I could, I could see that.
I see the challenge in that if it's a, what's the limit for the subdivision requirements to get DES approval?
Five acres.
So less than five acres. If any of the lots are less than five acres, it has to get DES approval for the subdivision. So I feel, yeah.
Can I make a note on that just clerically? Because when I look at the numbers like 40,000, I find that way more confusing than one acre. And I think people reading this are going to read it and be like, I don't know what 40,000 square feet is.
We made the change, just the numbers were consistent across the board, so you wouldn't have to convert square feet into acres.
Yeah, but could you somewhere on here put a note to add what that actually is? Like if you do change it to 40,300, you know, 300, what is it?
Forty-three, five, sixty.
Like at the bottom, just say what that is. Because I don't think most people know.
Yeah, but most people who are going to be going through this to this level will be, will be, yeah.
Won't the people voting see these numbers?
Very good point, thank you.
Right? Just the sense that like, I don't know what, you know, I just think-
Which is why the language-
Lots, I think of acreage.
If we follow a similar language to the one in here-
We see, is that part of our packet?
This is, no, this is not part of the packet, but it's part of the hearing notice that went out. And it will likely be something similar that would be going onto the ballot, I think, probably. And for those of the hearing notice, for example, says, switch lot size requirements to a builder's acre standard where one acre is replaced with 40,000 square feet.
But that's misleading, I think.
Yeah, I agree. If it's, if you can't have a well and a septic system on 40,000 square feet, we shouldn't be using it in our zoning.
Do you want a motion?
I don't think we need a motion.
I don't know if I want one, I would accept one. I can't really deny one.
I mean, I'm aware, I don't know those rules adequately and I wonder if we should-
Are we talking about here changing that number to 43,000, whatever?
Forty-three, five, sixty is one acre.
Yeah.
You could just call it one acre, I guess.
And it would only be on the 40,000 then that we wouldn't be rounding to an even
With the onsite, onsite-
But it would have to-
Water and septic.
It would have to be all the zones.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think, yeah, I think if 40,000 square feet is not an acre, we should, and we're replacing a one acre measurement, I guess the builder's acre is 40,000 square feet though. But the septic approval acre is 43,560.
I mean, either way, they would have to follow the 43,000 to get approval for the septic, but if it makes people's lives easier to think about the actual number on here as a minimum matching, which is a separate issue in some ways.
Why can't you just put down one acre?
Because it needs to be consistent with-
It would be nice to have all the numbers consistent.
We're not measuring square feet in some places. The units just don't make sense.
I got a question for Neil. Neil, if the builder was coming forward and he has town water and he wants to put a septic, and this new change or the existing change, existing zoning says that you could do a half acre, now we're going to say 20,000 square feet.
As long as they can meet lot loading capacity.
Okay. So we were thinking when we went to a simple 40,000, 20, 10, that as long as you met the load capacity-
No, you can't, you've got to have, you've got to have an acre.
You've got to have an acre.
So you would still have to have an acre even if it's at 40,000 here. What we're talking about is just making numbers line up for people so it's less confusing for them. It wouldn't change what actually got built because you'd still need an acre lot for the septic reasons.
But if someone purchases a piece of property and they read this 40,000, and then they go and get their septic approved, and it's not approved because-
I'm not arguing against changing it. I'm just arguing like why we're changing it.
I just think it's misleading, that's why.
So I think a subdivision regulation, subdivision cannot be approved without going through making sure that each of those lots are, DES will approve any, or needs to approve anything that's five acres or less.
Right.
So it would get caught by them, say this is not going to be allowed because you can't have a septic system on it.
Can we just change that, the 40,000 on this and just change it to 43,560?
Is that a motion?
I think we need to do it in every place.
And every, and every-
In every, yeah.
Yeah, right across the board.
If in other places too.
On-site, septic and public and private water, just on that one.
Again, it wouldn't change anything that's allowed, really. It would just basically, I mean, it would change the minimum higher, but it would just address the confusion that people might have.
If that is the case that Neil's saying, and I have no doubt because he deals with it on a, on a regular basis, I have no doubt that that is the case and-
And I'm fine with that.
If that is the case, then we should change it.
I'm fine with that. You want to make a motion, Mike?
I'd make a motion wherever it says 40,000 square feet, that we change just that number to 43,560.
And with that change, move this to a second public hearing?
Is there, we're still in the, so-
The public hearing is remaining-
Public hearing's continuous, we're just leaving it open.
I think we still need to get a little bit more feedback if someone has anything more to say, but-
If anybody wants to comment, I'm fine if-
I don't think it's fair to let somebody buy a lot thinking they can use it. There's no appeal process in this regard because you need a certain minimum. I can't do anything as a zoning board. Person's in a jam. Why go there?
No, I think most of us seem like we're fine with changing this.
Just changed it.
Yep.
Okay, well, Frank, if you want to-
If we're talking about establishing lot size by subdivision, 43,000 is correct. If you're talking about existing subdivided land that does not have the acreage, the DES will work with the individual on site to accommodate a septic system.
So, Mike, you have a motion to move this amendment forward with that change?
I don't think he did that, I think he just-
No, he didn't actually. I'm just wondering if this is a motion you're trying to make.
So just to clarify-
Go ahead.
So I wanted to ask to clarify, there, I see across all zones where it says with onsite septic disposal and private water, we're going to change all of those, plus moving in the agricultural zone with municipal or private sewage disposal or public water, and then with municipal, private sewage and public water. So we're moving in the ag zone, the minimum lot size is going to be one acre regardless.
Yeah, anywhere it says 40,000.
As it is currently, anyway.
So there's that one line that's all of them, and then there's two other places that have it in the ag zone.
So I want to-
Was that your intent?
Well, I want to clarify, based on what Frank just said. If someone has a, as an example, someone had a three-acre lot that they wanted to, or slightly less than three-acre lot, the way that it was read, you, slightly less than three acres, you could get no more than two lots. If we go to 40,000, that slightly less than three probably might fit in with 40,000 square foot lots. But Neil is saying, if you're trying to make that subdivision happen, it wouldn't happen because they need to have at least an acre per lot to make a new subdivision. But if you already have a lot that's 41,000 square feet, as long as you meet the loading capacities, you could get a septic system.
That's what Frank was saying, yes.
The only time you can get a waiver is if your lot of record is prior to July 1st, 1967, and it had a working system at that time.
We should not be creating new lots.
Okay. And we're not really going to be dealing here with existing lots for our amendments. We're talking about new lots and there's dimensional requirements.
I will say that these zoning standards do determine whether existing lots are conforming or not, so-
Yes, but they're not going to change whether or not you get an approval for a septic.
True, but there may be other things that are affected by minimum lot size, whether lots are conforming or not in terms of area.
So I hear, I hear some consensus. It sounds like we're okay with most of these numbers and these dimensional requirements, and we want to change the 40 to 43, I always forget the other numbers.
Five, sixty.
Five, sixty.
Did anybody second Mike's?
Is that only for the, for when you need a septic system and private well?
Yeah, for everywhere where it says-
You're not changing-
Forty because of-
On-site septic and private water, right?
We're changing that to 43,560.
I'll second it.
So Mike has a motion to just change that, but not change it and move this forward.
I don't think it was a motion to change that, I think it was just like, let's change that.
Yeah, I did make a motion because I think we need to determine which box is here, the 40,000 that we may be thinking of changing.
I think we have to do it in every one that says 40,000. And not make anything that's less than 40, any-
Municipal water, with municipal or private sewage or public water in accordance with the appropriate state standards.
I would feel more comfortable just-
Changing them all?
Changing even the two in the ag zone.
Okay.
I think they all have to change, so it's not confusing.
Even where there is water or sewer.
Okay.
It's making it consistent with DES regulations, so it's less confusing. It's adding 3,560 feet in-
Ag, which is basically what it is now anyway.
It's, yeah, it's making it, it's taking away a slightly less restrictive lot, but the DES regulations, we're going to make it have to be that lot size anyway, so.
Looking at one, two-
Even if it's on public water and sewer.
Not thinking it's on public water and sewer.
Private water.
Anything that's-
Even there, we were talking about where they are.
No, it doesn't affect public water or sewer, we were talking about that, in the ag zone.
So the question is, do we change the other ones, yeah?
Water and sewer, that's water or sewer.
We can just be consistent for the sake of not confusing anyone.
First one says in accordance with-
So in the ag zone, it's 43,560.
Up here.
Consistently. This way, we don't have certain parts that got 40, other parts that got 43, and just change them all.
So it looks like there's eight spots that we would change it, am I right?
Yes.
So I make that motion. I'll second.
You have a question?
Yes. If we're not going to just the water and sewer, to Sue's point, the 40,000, 43,000 doesn't matter because the water's already there, sewer's already there.
In some ways, the consistency of the lot size in the ag zone as an acre, regardless of that, just makes, I think, things a little bit easier than having 43 versus 40, which aren't that different anyway. I know they could make a difference in some marginal cases.
Actually, you don't need to change those two.
So I take back my motion.
You don't need to change-
We're going to be here all night.
It's all right.
I don't think we are.
Just the, just the six at the bottom.
I think it's just that bottom area where it's onsite disposal and lot.
Mike, do you want to make your motion again?
We can certainly do that.
I, I'd like to know-
I will take back my second, so you can-
So Neil, Neil, which ones that you see that absolutely have to be changed? It looks like it's-
Six across the, next to the bottom.
Which one?
All zones where it says with onsite septic disposal and private water.
So those, one, two, three, four, five, those six.
Because it's water or sewage.
Yeah, but you can have water or sewer.
But can you get your DES?
Yeah. So the other two are fine, Neil?
You can do it with less than 43,000.
You just can't have water and, you can't have a well and septic.
You have to have a 43,560 square foot lot.
Only if you have private water and sewer. Private sewer.
So just that one line then?
So the other two can stay at 40.
Okay.
You do a well or septic on less than an acre.
Give me back that 4,000, 3,560 square feet.
Okay, so we're eliminating-
You can do well or septic on less than an acre, you just can't do well and septic under an acre.
Okay, so let's try to get through this.
So we're eliminating the 40,000 on-
That one row.
Just that one line.
One, two, three, four, five, the six row across in the middle?
Yes.
We're eliminating, that will not change.
And we're leaving the other two parcels in the ag zone-
At 40,000.
With water or sewer at 40,000. I will second your motion.
Okay, so six and then eight in the middle as well?
No.
We're keeping that.
Those two in the middle are going to stay 40.
Just those six places.
With an onsite septic disposal and private water.
The one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yes.
Six places we're changing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next to the bottom line.
Having fun, Mark?
Always.
Is it clear to Joseph who's taking notes?
Yeah, so we're getting that whole bottom line that says with an onsite septic disposal and private water, that's all going to 43,560. Everything else is staying the same as you see it today in front of you.
So we have a motion and a second?
Can you do this one more time?
All right. Any further discussion from the board?
They can make a point about the parking. It's tough not to blend the fourth amendment.
Oh, sure. I was asking if there's any further discussion from the board at this point. So... Any further discussion?
So we've got one other issue that was brought up, and that's parking within-
Five feet.
Is it 10 feet?
Do we need to approve the amendment first?
No, we're, it's, we're just talking about the second.
We're still fine with the same amendment.
Right.
We're discussing whether or not we want to make these changes, or Mike is potentially asking other changes, I think.
I would like to call the question of the change to the area table, and then we can-
Separately.
Separately, and then we can address-
We haven't actually talked, we haven't actually talked about moving the whole thing forward yet. Okay.
So just the change to that.
Any further discussion about just the change to the area dimension table? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passed. Any further discussion of this amendment as a whole, amendment three?
So the only other item that was brought up by the public is the side parking within five feet. What did that used to be, Joseph?
Fifteen.
So we're talking 15 parking within the lots in what zones?
Single family and multifamily.
And CI as well, I think was-
That CI is zero, on the side.
Side.
Ten.
No, it's 10. And I think it was 15.
A big part of the discussion was trying to encourage or discourage people from parking in front yards.
And give them the space next to their houses, especially on smaller lots as they existed historically, and we're encouraging now to have the space to park next to their houses without quite being so bold, as to put it, with a zero setback against the property line, which is what many of them are currently.
Yeah, I would probably-
To allow that five feet with a bit of a criteria and another amendment for a buffer there.
Yeah, I, from the feedback that I've heard tonight, I would, I don't remember hearing anything for or against it of all the community meetings. I don't know if it's quite registered on anybody's radar because there's just so much information that we put out there for the community meetings. You start your car in the morning, let it run for 20 minutes, you're five minutes, you're five feet off. Oh, I agree, but your five minutes-
It's a half hour, isn't it?
And you're, and you're right on your neighbor's yard and exhaust. So I don't know, I'd be more concerned in the single family zone than the multifamily.
Drive up Merrill Street or High Street, all of the houses right now literally have a chain link fence and a foot of grass to either side.
The cars are against them.
With two driveways right up next to their house.
If I can just remind-
I mean, your neighborhood, High Street, I think it's literally reflective of what was already in all our areas.
If I can just remind everyone going forward to not just start speaking, but to come to the podium and introduce yourself and all of that.
Just for context about what Drew said, he's right, but at the same time, driveway to driveway is one thing, and I think most people would accept that. It's when it would be driveway up against yard or driveway up against house. Like, I don't think people would care if you and I are neighbors and our houses are out here and our driveway is literally almost, almost abut each other. I don't think that bothers people. It's when it becomes.
To that, you still have a fifteen foot for a house. So that still means a vehicle is going to be twenty feet from a house. And in the parking section, which will be next, you'll know that you need bushes, shrubs, or some sort of green between where that parking is and where the house is. You would have a house fifteen feet, shrubs, you know, within a five-foot buffer before you have a driveway.
If I can just say, I mean, part of what makes a single-family residential in its current character what it is, is to be a pretty dense little community, and things are close together. And we currently have parking right next to yards, and we're all living with it and enjoying our lives there, and.
You don't know where everyone has it.
Well, whatever, yeah.
Online comment here real quick. You know, you talk about a fifteen-foot variance from your house to the parking lot, but maybe your yard abuts that driveway and your kids are playing right next to where the person's running their car to warm up in the morning. And it, not to bleed into the next amendment, but when you talk about the requirements that I agree with, that you need some shorter shrubbery, five feet gets eaten up very quick, and then the onus on the homeowner to maintain that, it could be the difference of, you know, spring and summer flowering shrubs versus winter. It can be quite a bit. I think it needs to be up a little bit personally.
Okay.
I would like to make the comment that just because we're allowing for a lesser setback doesn't mean we're requiring a lesser setback.
No, we're not.
You know, I think most homes are going to be designed with more space if possible, but I, I think if we want to allow for increased density, I think it's important that most aspects of a, of a lot be able to be reduced a little bit. And, you know, if you have, if your house is fifteen feet from your par, from your neighbor's driveway, which is five feet away, you know, it's, it's within your right to put up a fence if you want to do, if you want to keep your, your kids out of the neighbor's driveway. That's, you know, there's, there are multiple ways that, property rights in small spaces, you know, there's still options for you.
I mean, and, and to add to that, Phil, you're talking about increased density. In many ways, this would still be less density than we actually have in much of the single family.
True.
Yeah. And again, which is a neighborhood that lots of people really enjoy living in, and.
I think this does illustrate something that we might have to deal with as a board later on, and that's the single-family residential covers a number of different neighborhood types. And I think trying to make something that works from the downtown, or the sort of walkable neighborhoods to all the way up to Thurlow Street can be challenging. And I think we're trying to do our best here to, to make those downtown walkable neighborhoods conform and to be able to be redeveloped if needed without.
I'm sorry, you, you weren't done?
No, it's okay.
I, I, I think we are encouraging, though, some of that density to expand a little bit, especially where there's water and sewer, along historic lines that people have liked. And so I see what you're saying, and at the same time.
We don't, we don't need to discuss that.
And to some of that, we're curtailed in some of this density by water and sewer as well.
Yep.
So I would like to hear from the board at this point where we stand on this particular issue. We've heard some, we've gotten some feedback, and I just want to kind of.
A lot of the density that you're seeing in these people parking next to these houses in these smaller communities, smaller neighborhoods, has just come over the years because they could. It wasn't there originally. They would park in front of the house, and just over the years, it was easier to do it, or they acquired another car. And so it hasn't always been there. So I think, I think what, what I'm hearing is that five feet, it seems a little small for people. That's, that's just not really what they want to live with. So I think we need to just really look at that.
Is there a way that we could leave the, in the single-family residential zone, leave it at fifteen and change it in the multifamily and other zones?
So if, at my house, if we left it at fifteen feet, and I had to redevelop my, couldn't even property, whatever, something terrible happened, there'd be no place to park a car.
Park in front of your front door.
Yeah, I could park in my front yard. That would be the only place I could park. So I am not in conformity with the zoning ordinance, and I'm certainly one of many, many homes in the single family that is dealing with that.
And with any future homes that are built on, for example, a ten thousand square foot lot, if anybody wants to do that, to build on a ten thousand square foot lot and have room for parking on the side, as we've, as we've often done historically, if you look where the garages are and all that kind of stuff in most of those older buildings, you can't do it without a much smaller side setback for parking.
And I think what you'll end up getting is more people maybe pushing a house further back and parking in the front yard, and I think that will change neighborhood character way more than parking close to a side, in the side yard.
And if you want greater space, you know, there's always the ag zone.
Well, and I, and I understand, I understand the reasoning behind this is if you want to encourage and eventually require parking in the back of the house, you would need that room and that setback to be lessened to make it work to get behind the house. So I, I get that, but I don't know whether there's a lot of, I don't know whether there's the support for parking in the back of the house, as you may think. And we may want to talk about that in conjunction with that side setback. My thoughts.
I mean, I look at this, in many ways, a lot of what we're talking about in these single and multifamily residential neighborhoods is restoring an historic pattern of development. And part of that pattern of development is side parking close to the property lines. And we're just basically talking about allowing people to do that again, not quite as radically as they used to, allowing a little bit more kind of setback for privacy and car exhaust or whatever, but still getting us closer to what most of that development already is, that that was built there.
Historically, this region has wanted the shortest possible driveways that they can, which is in front of their house, because they're snowblowing their yard, and they don't want to snow blow along the side of their house. They want to do as little as possible.
Historically, they didn't have snow blowers.
Well, shoveling for snow blowers.
I think, I think we also have a prohibition, I think, later that, that limits parking in front of a house, too. So I, I think, you know, if, if we want to encourage patterns, you know, parking along the side is really, I think that's what we should be encouraging. I, I mean, I, I agree that, you know, I, I think in contrast to other parts of the country where you can park on the street overnight, we have, we can't park on the street, so people have to have somewhere on their parcel. And, you know, in a small lot, the more you take up with driveways, the, the less you have for, you know, green space. You know, I, I really think that, you know, allowing a home and a driveway just to get off the road, you know, you might, you might, it might be too deep, single car wide. I mean, or it might be too wide, but, you know.
We're not saying they can't do it. It's just if the lot is big enough, you can bring your car right up alongside your building. It's just.
But my concern, I like, I like the idea of the five-foot setback for parking.
Some people are very close to their house.
It allows for flexibility, but it doesn't mandate it. It just allows for flexibility to do it if you need to.
So if you have one of these smaller lots and you want to build a house, and you can't park close to the property line, you can put instead two cars side by side in front of your house and have a larger curb cut and less visibility for all sorts of things, and a how, a car right in front of your house, rather than two cars, one in front of the other, as many houses have now, smaller curb cut, and no obstruction of the front of your house. Again, as we see all over residential neighborhoods.
So I have a question for Joseph. Let's say that we keep it at the five feet and we push it on to the next hearing. In the next hearing, we decide we want to take out or go back to the fifteen, would that mean we nullify the whole rest of it? Or can we just remove one little piece and still have our second hearing and bring it to the town vote?
That would depend on if there's enough time to notice a third hearing and that we may, may not.
If we remove something, it would still require another hearing?
So, yes.
If it's substantive.
A substantive change, so what the planning board, you know, has noticed as far as what the hearing is going to be, if that is going to change, there needs to be, or if it's going to change substantively, there would need to be another hearing posted. And, and there is certainly adequate time to post another hearing after this at the, at the January fourth meeting. We, we would get a little tighter posting another hearing at, after that meeting. I'm not sure if that would be possible.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yes, you may.
Since it seems like the biggest concern is abutters with the five-foot setback. We haven't talked about the rear. I think the issue could still be the same. Can we just make it in, consistent, well, there's some, with the ag zone, but then allow for five feet by special exception, since the zoning board doesn't have a lot of business? But just thinking if the concern is a butters and they're single-family homes, they're not going to a public, any sort of public hearing that would require a butter notice, can we put in five by special exception, so then there can be a facilitated conversation between a butters and the property? I think that's a great idea.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay.
Make the motion.
Rebecca?
I'm just not sure which to choose because we got a bunch of tens, fifteens, double lots in here.
Actually, it's the, I have a, I have a terrible question you're going to hate me to ask. Oh, wait.
Ag is fifteen.
And a setback for uncovered parking spaces, there it is, okay.
So I would say we just, we mimic the, the ag zone for the side and rear.
So you say fifteen and ten, but five by special exception?
Uh huh.
We need ten.
Wait, 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 wait. Fifteen, side and rear. Currently, looking at this, is our, are we actually at ten already in this revised minimum setback, side and rear have gone down to ten already?
Okay, so let's just make it consistent with what it is now.
Ten and ten, five by special.
Five by special exception.
In both the single family and multifamily.
And the only reason I suggest, the multifamily, I'm less concerned about, but there is some multifamily that glossed up against single families.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that?
Yeah, I did, still moved. I don't know if I made a motion.
Yeah, I made the motion that we are, we are changing the parking tables in the, so the setbacks for single family and multifamily are going to change to ten.
Going to remain at ten.
Sorry. Sorry. We'll remain at ten, but we will allow five by special exception in the side and rear for both single family and multifamily.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the side and rear parking in single-family, multifamily residential. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yes.
Is there an updated ordinance?
I meant specifically from the board at this point, because we have a motion on the table. Mike, did you have a?
Can he speak first?
I prefer you to speak first.
So I'd like clarification on what exactly we're changing. We're going from, for the single-family residential and did, Rebecca, were you saying multifamily?
And multifamily residential.
Because it could be up against the single family. We were changing those from what it, the proposed was five for the rear and five for the side, and we're proposing ten.
It's already at ten for both, right?
It's, it's already in our amendment here at ten.
Well, that would be for the front.
For side and rear, minimum setbacks in feet, side and rear.
We're looking at the parking setback table, which is.
This one?
See, oh, minimum setbacks to cover parking spaces. See, section four eleven point thirteen.
Page five, top of page five.
Yeah.
So.
No, I know, I know where we are there. I'm just saying, I was thinking about the other broader setbacks, but yeah, whatever, sorry.
So the ag, the ag zone is fifteen.
But it exists, I think it exists in our current zoning ordinance at ten.
I thought, I thought Joseph said fifteen.
I believe the current parking setback from all lot lines and streets is fifteen.
Okay.
So, but I'm, yeah.
So I'm thinking we keep it at fifteen with a five-foot special exception.
The motion was to stay at ten with five-foot special exception.
But it wasn't, but the terminology is if it's at fifteen, to stay at ten doesn't make sense.
I, I made the motion specifically to say move it to ten with special, but with special exception at five, just for clarity. If you don't, if we don't vote for that and you want to go back to fifteen, that's okay, but.
Phil, our overall setback in our amended zoning ordinance here is ten, side and rear.
Yeah. So, but.
You wouldn't have parking at fifteen with a ten overall setback.
Okay. But yeah.
So in some way or another, we want to have parking, if you want to go down to five, by special exception. And we can figure out the exact language of that, but the otherwise, it would stay at ten. Is that right?
We're move, we're changing it to ten, not staying at ten.
Well, it, to be consistent with this.
Except there are other changes here proposed to go to ten.
Or side and rear setbacks already, anyway.
Backs. So, yeah, you wouldn't have a greater setback for parking than you would for a building.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense.
So it's already down to ten by default anyway from that previous page? That part passes, then the five, then that's, it passes in parking.
I'm not trying to.
Doesn't.
So we've already, that table, the three oh four area dimensions, page four, number eight, already includes a, in the single family and multifamily, we already has a side and rear setback of ten feet in both the single family and the multifamily. So we were, we would keep the parking the same, but allow a special exception to go down to five feet for parking, for uncovered parking.
If the individual on Zoom has a quick comment, I'd.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it. So it sounds like, you know, a minute ago, you said the fifteen-foot setback for the house, and I must admit it, now it's a ten-foot setback for the house going forward?
I believe it's currently, in our current zoning ordinance, fifteen. In the amendments of Amendment Three here, it goes down to ten.
Although that depends on the zone.
It doesn't, yeah, no, no, not, not across the board, no.
In the ag zone.
Single-family residential?
And multifamily residential, and, and commercial industrial. Those are, those are the ones that change. Ag stays the same.
So now we have, now we have our, you know, kids at ten feet and the car is running at an extra five, so it's fifteen feet?
Potentially.
Well, you still have to fit it. So, I mean, if you're developing your lot and your house is at ten, you're not going to fit a driveway next to that with a five-foot setback. You, you have to adjust things. It just gives people more flexibility.
You're right. My understanding is not, probably an offline conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm losing track of, we have, I know you, you kind of had a motion.
Motion on the table, in the second.
We do have a motion in a second. Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed and abstentions. Okay, so the motion passes. So do we want to make a, one last motion to, with those two amendments, to move this forward to our next hearing?
Yeah, this is all of Amendment Three with the amended area use table. I would, I would make a motion to move Amendment Three to the second hearing, as amended.
I'll, I'll second that if no one else will.
Any, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, so moved and we, or not so moved, but the motion passes. Sorry. Long evening. I have a lot to keep track of.
Page seven, Amendment Four.
Amendment Four. Excuse me. Amend parking requirement table. To eliminate unused uses, amend the multifamily dwelling and accessory dwelling unit parking requirement.
Are we, oh, sorry. Am I on the wrong page?
Am I on the wrong page?
No.
You don't have what he has.
Oh, this is, this is the language that is from the, from the actual public notice for this hearing.
Yeah, so, but it wasn't provided to us.
It wasn't in the packet.
All right, all right.
I mean, it's provided to everybody.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, John. Sorry to interrupt.
So amend parking requirement table to eliminate unused uses, amend the multifamily dwelling and accessory dwelling unit parking requirements, adjust the setback requirements, excuse me, between parking facilities and property lines, require a special exception. require a special exception for surface parking between the front line, front lot line and the front of residential buildings, not included in stacked, not including stacked parking within the SFR, MFR, and CI districts, delete ambiguous wording in section four eleven point four C, amend section four eleven point four D to apply to non-residential uses only. So there is some kind of this general language cleanup here. Otherwise, multifamily were proposing to regulate parking by unit and unit size rather than number of bed, by the actual number of bedrooms. So to actually, like most towns would do, regulate it by units, including like this many unit, this many bedroom units, this many sized bedroom, as opposed to just regulating by bedrooms, which it is in our current zoning ordinance. I believe that's the change, right? That part of the change?
Correct.
There is a clarification in this section about the hundred and twenty-five foot rule, now addressing that more fully in parking, so that that issue we talked about earlier is addressed. So you can't go over a hundred and twenty-five percent or under a hundred percent without getting, I believe it's a special exception. Is that correct, Joseph?
Yeah, I believe that's what it says.
And then there's the, let's look through this here. There's the inclusion of single-family dwelling detached and attached, which is, does the language change because we added that use? And that has to go into the table. And no surface parking spaces, this is one we've talked about a little bit already. No surface parking spaces shall be located between the front building line of a residential building and the public street, except stacked parking in a paved or gravel driveway. So this is what we were talking about with the current kind of situation on the ground in the residential neighborhood, especially single-family, where you have stacked parking, one car behind the other, not on top of one another, you know, just for clarification, next to the house, and to say, you do that and you do not park between the front line of the house and the lot line, front lot line, to avoid front of the house parking and parking facilities. So it kind of goes hand in hand with allowing the side parking more easily. So you might have a, a, in that case, which is where the stacked parking comes in, you might have a car that's in front of the front line of the house, but in a stacked parking situation, not directly in front of the house. It'd be still next to the house, but in front of that line, you might have. The goal is to eliminate people parking directly in front of houses or having garages in front of houses or in front of the, front line of the house where possible. And just kind of looking through this language. Yeah, so that, that's, I mean, that's my introduction. If anybody wants to clarify that on the board before we open up to the public? Are there any public comments on this amendment?
Frank, go first. I'd like to suggest that we add some wording to what we've been talking, is off-street, on-site parking, which we just discussed, if it's single-family, multifamily, it's off-street, on-site, as proposed to paragraph D, which talks about off-street, off-site, which has a totally different mechanics of discussion. And as it's written here.
Sorry, Frank, what, what paragraph D? What page are you talking about?
Four, four one, decimal four, which is equality. It talks about location of off-street parking. We have two parking systems, off-street, on-site, like a single-family or multifamily house, and off-street, off-site, which we have in a village commercial zone. You cannot park, we just don't have the real estate to do the parking on-site in a village commercial zone, which under D, which if we're going to talk about numbers or whatever, it should be classified as off-street, off-site. So that's two different discussions of types of parking systems.
I, this is something I would defer to town council on, in terms of the language. I'm having a hard time parsing that out and.
I think off-site parking is a different, I mean, it's in the table of uses.
Yeah.
So.
I'm getting, it's getting late.
Yeah, no, I think, I think this is, I mean, I think what we've got here is sufficient for what we're trying to do. I think the off-site parking facilities is a, is a different issue that's not addressed here at all.
Thank you, Rebecca, for being clear in mind about this tonight right now.
Is the board going to consider anything of off-site parking?
Not changes.
Not this time around.
Because the, the definition needs to be, in my view, clarified somewhat. Talks about three hundred feet, but doesn't talk about how you measure that three hundred feet.
Remember, became an issue last year.
Yeah.
Was an issue last year.
I think we're aware.
I think that ball's still in your court.
But, but we have.
I mean?
I think that ball is still in your court.
Oh, thanks.
Sorry.
Well, we decided it. But, you know, it's ambiguous.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
It was not on the agenda for this round of changes.
No, and it should be clarified, in fact, and, or dealt with in some way, whether it be clarified or just changed, and.
We tackled enough this time around.
Yeah. We decided not to add that to our plate right now. We're mostly talking about housing issues, and it does need to be addressed, I agree. And I'll put that on the list, actually.
There's a list.
Well, it is on the list, but I put it on my list that might, might have slipped off. Other public comments?
Bruce Wicket, four eleven point three, section B.
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 Yep.
No surface parking shall be located between the front building line of a residential building, public street, except for stacked parking. I think we spent this whole time in our group talking about being able to make homes more affordable. Many homes that are more affordable use as much of the lot as possible in a small lot. Family lives, my parents built a house in South Carolina. You have housing development after housing development after housing development, where you have a garage and a house slightly set back to the right to be able to gain access to the house. I drove around, you know, in the last three days, I found twenty-five homes, many of them owned by prominent people with inside town that have parking in front of their house. Trees would not be able to have her house because she parks in front of her house.
So any, any existing use can continue.
I understand that, but.
This is, this is future.
This is future development, and I can appreciate that, but we are eliminating a housing style that you, you cannot, like this is, you know, I get it, if you're trying to rebuild something and you might get the special exception with inside the, you know, say on High Street, you have to redo something, you might get that special exception, but we're talking a housing development that's trying to develop something new, you're going to eliminate an entire housing style based solely off of the want to have someone to park on the right or left of their house.
I had that same question. And I, when I asked the question, there was a differentiation between a driveway to a garage and, and a parking space in front of a residence, and there was a differentiation between the parking structure, garage, and the home.
But not with inside this. It's, it's not, it cannot park between the road and the home.
But the garage is not the home.
So I think, yeah.
Garages are regulated separately than residential.
And what's, and my other question is, is there are homes that garages are under the, the front of the home that that would eliminate? And second, and I should say third.
But there's a driveway.
What's the reasoning for this? If it's safety, I, I coach literally on, I, I coach for vehicle driving where ninety percent of all emergency vehicle accidents are when they're backing out. You're telling me that you want to park cars along the side of a house for safety when all accidents, ninety percent of the accidents from law enforcement, fire, EMS, is in reverse? And these are professional drivers that do it. So if, if the whole concept of this is for safety, stacking driveways and mandating people stack driveways, that means they have to back past their house to the road or back, or a longer distance, or a shorter distance onto the street. And if this is based solely off of safety and what a, you know, what looks pleasing, I just say that we have a, we spent all of this time trying to make it so that we could have a smaller lot size with more density, to use the term that most everybody's used, to then say, well, the whole right side of your house now has to be in access for your garage, that has to be in the backyard.
Or beside.
Or beside, in an effort to, you know, keep the very few people that might park in front of their house or design a house where the garage is in the front. And, you know, I go down south and I've seen ten thousand home communities built in South Carolina that almost every home, it may not be the home that I'd build, but almost to a home, the garage is in the front with a short driveway with a house to the back for a backyard, so that people can play in the backyard.
Three minutes?
So, thank you.
Rebecca, you look like you're itching to speak.
No, I just, I was.
Oh, no?
Checking for it.
Okay. So, I know, I know Bruce in, in the housing committee, you've listened to me talk about this before. There has been a lot of, to speak broadly first, there has, has been a lot of pushback against houses with garages in front of the house line in broader planning and other development communities. And I know a lot of them exist. Why is this? It's several factors. One of them is aesthetic, as you mentioned, and some people just don't like to look at the style of house, seeing a bunch of garages in a row with a house more hidden. Another is community-based in terms of having greater visibility of a front door to a home rather than just a parking facility. And then there are safety concerns which tend to revolve around families in neighborhoods and having sightlines from the home, whether a front window or a porch or whatever, that are not obstructed by garages, especially in front of the house line, where the ability to see your kids playing in your own yard, your neighbor's yard, and down the street is obstructed by parking structures. And so those types of houses that, you're right, are very widespread. They've gotten a lot of criticism from a lot of circles on community grounds about like fostering community by having front doors more be the face of your house, on aesthetic grounds, and on community safety grounds, not necessarily vehicular, but just in terms of families living in communities, having that community visibility has been talked about quite a lot. And that's what I'll say about that.
If I make, may I make a comment from out here?
You may.
You go on Bruce's point about, you know, your visibility, and like you said, the visibility from your, your windows out, as we constrict these houses and we mandate in the case of shrubs and trees, or, you know, encourage with fences, those backing out visibility is going to become even more challenging. So I think it applies in the face of increased safety, you know, in my opinion.
I, I share the concerns about the strict limitations on parking locations that are in four eleven point three B.
Can we think about special exception?
I would actually like to move that we strike the language. No surface parking shall be located between the front building line of residential building and the public street, except stacked parking in a paved gravel driveway located between the side of the building, principal building and the side lot line. So that the remaining sentence reads, in the single-family residential, multifamily residential, and CNI districts, parking spaces in the side or rear yard shall be separated from the closest side or rear lot line, abutting residential use by a minimum buffer of five feet, with landscape with shrubs, ornamental grasses, trees, or other suitable landscaping, the ZBA may grant a special exception to waive the minimum buffer and landscape requirements for abutting lines and common ownership.
Before, I think you made a motion, but before we, could we talk through it to see if we can make something that works?
Give some of these seconds, my motion, then we can talk about it.
Well, we can talk about it the other way. We have.
Now it's on the table, we can talk about it.
Nobody has to second it at all, like, we can talk about it.
Well, Sue seconded it.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did.
You don't, typically.
We can still have a discussion.
In motion and second, and then discuss.
I know, I know, we can.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I'm not, I wonder if we could, and I know, John, you said special exception, I was thinking the same thing, can we make it a special exception? I think that way we're encouraging what we'd like to see, but allowing a route and giving the ZBA more business to, to keep space, so people can do what they'd like to do, but with a little, with a structure of a special exception.
So, from our last housing committee meeting, we had four, I believe, four out of the six people there that were, or however many, expressing concern about forcing people, or greatly encouraging people to park between the road and the house, or not to. And that didn't seem like it went over well. With the amount of snow that we get trying to park behind a home, as snow gets piled up in that ten or five-foot buffer between their parking and the property line, it's going to get more and more tough as we try and encourage the parking behind the home and we expect tired plow drivers to drive not only on the side of the house, but then back and expect them to plow enough snow in these small lots to make room. I think we are asking for trouble in our region. I think that I am, tend to agree that striking out the majority of this paragraph would probably be in the best interest of everybody in Plymouth, and I've talked to many, many people over the last two or three weeks, there is absolutely no interest in having a landowner have to go to get a special exception to put parking in, in front of their home, when that's what everybody does in, in our community. But we would have to consider the language because five feet, if we've just changed it potentially to ten, so it might.
The, the, this is just specifically a buffer for five feet. You can still have a ten-foot setback and a five-foot buffer.
I just don't know.
I don't see that as, as out of alignment.
But I just think we are asking for many people to show up at the next meeting if this is still there.
Can I ask if those people you've spoken to live in single-family or multifamily residential?
Single-family zone, young couples with kids that.
I was thinking of all the homes along Highland Street that have like circular driveways in front that would, like, you can't build that style.
Historically, historically, a semi-circular driveway was a carriage drop-off. It was not a parking spot. They may be used as parking spots today, but historically, you would still park next to a house and you would drop someone off in a large carriage driveway that's a semicircle.
But you could.
I'm not saying this is what they were used, how they were used historically.
Sure, sure.
And the people that I talked to said, you know, that's great if you want to, you know, make a suggestion that, hey, you could have parking behind your house.
Or next to.
But, or next to, you can, you can say, hey,
But, or next to, you can, you can say, hey, you know, John, you can go up to people and tell them, hey, this would, might make sense. But to put it in the zoning that we require this, or if they don't, they have to go get a special exception and it, it just seems a bit over the top.
From, from my perspective, I, I understand the intent and I like it. I just think the, it's, what we have in the proposal before the modifications is too rigid and I, I think it would, I think it's going to sink this whole section, honestly. Like, I think if we can make this palatable, the rest of it might get approved.
I understand that and I do want, I do want this to pass, and I, I was just wondering if a special exception would be a reasonable compromise. Sue?
I just think if someone wants to build a house with a garage in the front, that's great. If they don't and they want a driveway in the front, that's great. It just starts to remind me of this form-based code that people are starting to talk about. I, I don't think it's up to us to tell them what kind of house to build. Some people may not want to look at the street and some people may want to see everything that's out in the street. So I, I, I just don't, I don't buy the safety issue with respect to having a garage there where you can't see. I just, I don't think it's up to us to tell them how they can do their front yard. I think it should be gone.
Two, two issues. If someone chooses to build an ugly house, that's what they get. Secondly, don't create a lot, a lot of non-conforming property. And that's what you're going to do if you do this. Because we already have a lot of this occurring and it all suddenly becomes non-conforming. And I, that's just silly.
And any changes have to go to ZBA.
Besides, I live in a corner lot and there's no way I can hide my car.
Both are technically front yards, that's.
Yeah, you have, you have two front yards and you can't park between your, the street and your house on either side.
Or the backyard, I suppose.
And I wondered too, if there's some of these lots that are an acre and they have, they're not on public sewer and water and they have to have their own septic system and it goes in the backyard and now they're forced to have their driveway on the side or in the back, that creates a bigger expense for a septic system that you can drive on. So, I mean, there are, there are issues with respect to that as well.
I think these are good points.
And people's backyards offer the only private space that they have.
Some people like to have their grill in the back, they don't want to have to be forced to have it in the front. I think we've got to give people, let them make their own choices.
Don't we have an amendment about grill placement coming up?
You are kidding, right?
Yes, I am kidding, yes.
I don't remember that one.
In a multifamily, they got to be fifteen feet away from any burn.
It's getting late. My motion stands. Sue seconded it, it's on the table. I'm, I'm, I don't want to curtail any discussion, I, I do want healthy discussion. But I, I think it's, I think the section that I suggested removing is too much at this time and I think it will negatively impact the rest of the amendment.
So I'm just going to say I'm willing to yield on this one and go along. I do think this is one of those instances where having everyone buying in and not having it more individually based is helpful from a community perspective in creating an inviteable, inviting and safe community where we look at houses and front doors and have sightlines that aren't blocked by somebody else's garage, rather than looking at garages. That being said, I don't want to block our amendments from passing and I'm willing to kind of go along with this one. So any further discussion? So we have a motion to remove that section that Phil noted in 411.3B. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, passes. Is there anything else to deal with in this section?
I, I think there needs to be some more clarity in definition of what that landscaping needs to be.
We didn't propose to change that from what's in the draft and it still says parking spaces in the rear side or rear yard shall be separated from the closest side or rear lot line abutting a residential use by a minimum buffer of five feet in width landscaped with shrubs, ornamental grasses, trees, or other sustainable landscaping. Sorry, suitable landscaping, landscaping.
It is a bit vague and.
So there may have to be a ten-foot setback, but only five, five feet of it has to be landscaped.
I'm okay with not getting more detailed about what people have to do there.
I, I think the language is not incompatible. I think if someone gets a, a special exception to go to five feet, it stands. And if somebody has a ten-foot setback, only five feet of it. So it gives them five feet to open a door and not hit their bushes and get out of their car.
Does that answer his question? I think he was questioning the landscape.
Well, he was asking if, I think we should be more stringent about what we're asking for and more specific.
Does that answer?
Yeah, exactly. Someone's going to put some rocks down between the two property lines and say, there you go, it's landscaped.
It's, it does say shrubs, ornamental grasses, trees, or other suitable landscaping.
Rocks.
And who's, who's going to say suitable?
Got it, okay, I see what you mean.
Is, is a stone wall not suitable though?
Again, define stone wall.
If there's an elevation change at the property line, it would be suitable, yes.
You know, I don't know personally that I want to be overly stringent about what people can put there. If there makes some kind of attempt to create a buffer that's not just grass or dirt, I think I'm pretty.
I'll disagree with you and say that someone making some kind of attempt is not a great way to govern ourselves.
I think.
In many cases, I agree.
I think it's a gray area and I do think you just can't leave these, these open. So, I, I don't know, I don't know what the wording would be, but.
How is this regulated? I mean, how is this, is this a compliance officer?
It would be a code enforcement issue.
It's broad.
Yeah, this is. The select would have the only enforcement authority over the zoning ordinance. Sorry, select board.
So it's not something that would really go before anybody with a plan, it's just something that has to get implemented through the building permit process with a new structure, probably.
I would imagine so. And then, like you said, the code enforcement officer, Tom Newcomb, is designated as code enforcement.
Frank, do you have a comment?
Yes, I think this buffer, some kind of natural buffer would fall into the definition of offense. And then you have limitations, so is the high and other issues with that. Establishing any kind of material buffer is the definition of fencing. So you might want to look at the way that's addressed in our zoning ordinance.
Could we say something like suitable landscaping consistent within the character of the neighborhood? I mean, it's also vague, but it at least points to what.
Putting character in zoning ordinance just is, is, it's.
Tough because.
It's subjective.
There's so many opinions about what it is and could be.
I don't know why they couldn't have a fence.
They can have a fence.
They, they can, there's nothing that prohibits a fence.
But the fence isn't governed here, it's in a different section.
But that's, that's a separate section altogether.
And is, is that a building code enforcement or is that then a highway department enforcement because it's driveway adjacent?
Fences are governed by building permit process and the fence section of the zoning ordinance. So you would, you would be going through building.
So I got to say personally, I'm all for landscaping plans on major developments with site plan review and having a plan on a large, like publicly facing development. On someone's property, I don't want to give them personally all that detailed a list of things they have to do on their yard, basically, including the buffer zone.
So this is, this is specific to when you have a parking area.
Yeah.
Near the lot line.
And don't we have restrictions on shrubbery and landscaping with snow removal or snow storage? We don't?
I mean, commercial, but not, not.
Commercial, yes, don't we with commercial?
This is specific to.
And I realize that. But in commercial, we have restrictions on snow storage.
You have to show, throw snow storage on your site plan.
Yeah, but not.
But it can't be on landscaping.
We're talking about single-family houses.
And I realize that, I'm just asking.
So the next sentence says the ZBA may grant a special exception to waive the minimum buffer and landscaping requirements for abutting lots in common ownership.
Common ownership.
I don't know, I don't know how you do that.
So, if it's a, if they're parking within five feet of the property line, they have to go to the zoning board for a special exception?
Yes.
And that's when we were, we would, under this would require them to have a buffer. Is there anything in the special, so I feel like that would be part of the special exception process?
Could be.
And they would, would they have to present what that buffer is going to look like? Or the, the suitable landscaping is going to look like? And does the special exception criteria cover that? Give enough guidance that the zoning board could make a good decision about, about that?
I trust that they have the judgment to determine.
Well, I just want to make sure our specialist exception criteria will, or, yeah, I, I feel like I just keep throwing stuff at the ZBA tonight.
Something to do.
I agree, I think it needs to be more clearly defined so the people that are making that decision of whether or not it's going to be approved. It removes ambiguity. Put a, put a width into it, put a height into it.
I mean, so I think, I think because of the special exception process that they'd be required to go through would probably cover.
On a case-by-case basis. Has to do with the character of the land, where the neighboring houses are, what the neighbor has to say about it.
It, it may be a situation where it's a low area in the backyard and you built, you brought in material that now there's a drop-off from your property line to the neighbor and maybe you don't want, maybe, you know, the, the vegetation might be specific to.
As I mentioned early, they're all living all together, they may just want to leave it open. Correct?
Your neighbor has a really nice car, you just want to look at it.
You just want to look at it.
All right, so are we ready to move forward with this amendment with the change as noted in our previous motion?
Are you looking for a motion?
I would take it so moved if you want to give me that.
I move that we move Amendment Four as amended to the second hearing.
Oh my God.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Number four goes to public hearing. Article, no, 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 Amendment Five, Article Four, Section 416. Says this is about accessory dwelling units, amend the accessory dwelling unit by converting them from permitted by conditional use permit to, if I can change things on the fly here, which is not, it says to permitted, but it would actually be to special exception, given our last change, that would have to be changed.
Single-family zone only, though, right?
And single-family zone only, yes. Otherwise, I guess permitted then, yeah.
So this, the way this title amendment reads, just to clarify, it would go from Section 416 accessory dwelling unit by conditional use permit to Section 416 accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
That might cover it either way.
Got it, yeah, so the language allows for that, could we change it elsewhere?
And then the next amendment, or the next paragraph, or piece eleven, you would need to.
Okay. Remove inaccurate language referencing state statutes. In other words, we can't assume that an accessory dwelling unit is workforce housing. Most of them probably are, but we can't assume that. Change required parking spaces to a minimum of one for an accessory dwelling unit. It's currently two, in addition to the spaces required for a single-family home. So that, that would be the change. I don't know, I don't know that I need to clarify it that much at this point.
Mostly administrative in nature and bringing it in line with, with the rest of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
I would just.
Yeah?
No, I was just going to say, I would note on page twelve where it says accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted in all zoning districts that permit single-family dwellings. You might want to consider amending that to say, aside from single-family residential.
Yes, where it's by special exception.
So which line, which number?
I was going to say be permitted in all zone, or is, shall, let's see, nevermind, I haven't quite.
Was that the second paragraph?
Section two, isn't it?
Section two A, so will only one ADU. Shall be allowed by special exception in single-family residential and permitted by right in all other zones.
So if, how do we feel about all this?
We can do it.
This one's pretty straightforward.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, but.
Um, are there public comments? N F C O, please come up. I think it's straightforward.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to say I really appreciate the work that the planning boards put on, on bringing our zoning ordinance up to date and getting rid of a lot of these little errors that we've been carrying along for many years. I think you've done a really good job and I just wanted, there's only one thing, I've read the whole, all your proposed amendments. The one thing that really bothers me is one phrase that I feel somehow snuck in and, and it's the kind of thing that might keep people from voting on, on the whole thing if they feel there's some kind of agenda, hidden agenda. And that is on page twelve, under B. We have a list of benefits for people, different groups of people, but there's one group that has a description for it. The college graduates who are saddled with significant student loan. I just wouldn't expect to see that kind of language in a zoning amendment. And I, I feel it was just, you know, it should just be strict, stricken.
Off of page twelve.
Uh, because it's verbose and, and it's just inappropriate in my view.
This came straight from straight language, this was the state statute language, yeah.
Yeah, from statutory language?
I mean, this is the, the.
Suggested.
We were given the, where when we had to put the ADU ordinance in there.
Right.
And this was just, what, 2018? So this language has been approved by, by town voters with, in recent memory. But we, this, this was the example language and we tweaked it to fit Plymouth and didn't pull out anything else.
Right, well, I would just note that there's a group, you know, groups of homeowners, single parents, college graduates, caregivers, and disabled persons, and it just seems lopsided to me or, and potentially politically charged for some people, that that would be in there. So that's just my suggestion.
Can I clarify? So are you opposed to the recent college graduates, the entire phrase?
No.
Or just the who are saddled with.
Who are saddled with significant student debt.
Just take that kind of phrase out of there.
What's that, what's that in a zoning ordinance for?
I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, no problem with that.
That's, seems reasonable to me.
And otherwise, I think you've done a great job, I mean, really, thank you.
What about changing recent college graduates, blah, 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 to younger residents? Making it more inclusive of people who may not have gone to college.
I just want to say, I'm not opposed to that, I just realize that this doesn't really have any binding power. This is just a kind of explanatory and I don't want to get too lost in the woods.
Oh, this is all in the purpose and intent.
Yes, and I don't want to get too lost in the woods rewriting that question.
Let's strike that.
That's not part of the ordinance.
But I'm certainly willing to remove that phrase there and.
Yeah.
All right.
And you know, the other one, C, I'm just looking at that now. So this is in. Integrating affordable housing into the community with minimal negative impact. How do, why do we assume just because we have affordable housing that there's got to be any negative impact? Is that going to stay or?
No, I get what you're saying and.
If we're, okay, I think we should not go wordsmithing this, I'd say let's take out A through D and just, and not have the including in the section, Roman numeral four, and call it good.
There are many important societal benefits associated with the creation of accessory dwelling units.
I just don't have the patience to be wordsmithing through some language that's like really not binding. So let's just take out all the letters in the word including and.
Got it.
Done, now our zoning ordinance is shortened.
Take out including and A, B, C, D, right?
So are there any other thoughts about, from the public or members of the planning board, about Amendment Number Five?
What did you do relative to when you took out?
So at the bottom, page eleven.
The conditional use permit. When you took out.
Oh, so.
We took out the CP.
And we're, and as we talked about earlier in one of the other amendments, we're doing a special exception in the single-family residential.
Do you need to say that there or is it?
We just talked about that a moment ago, in fact, and we, Joseph, Joseph recommended a place to put that.
Found a place to put.
Yes.
Where is it?
That's good.
Tell him where it is.
I'm not remembering.
Page twelve, under that, Section Two, where it says an accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted in all zoning districts that permit single-family dwellings. That would be where I think that change should be.
Yeah.
Did you hear that? Page twelve under that Section Two.
Section two.
introductory section.
Taken out? Just adding a reference to the special exception for the single-family. Taken out, just adding a reference to the special exception of the single-family residential.
Um, any further discussion of this one?
So here, it's, we changed this so that it's no longer permitted in the single-family residential, so we have to say with the exception of single-family residential where a special exception is required.
I'm ready for.
No longer permitted?
Somebody new this time. I'll make a motion that would move this, move this amendment number five on to the next public hearing as amended.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
They're getting ready to vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion has passed, and amendment number five with those changes goes on to public hearing in January. Amendment number six, article three, section 304.2, and article four, section 401.1, I'm just gonna read the announcement again, the notice of public hearing. Amend these sections to consolidate the commercial colocation section and multiple buildings on a single lot section into a new section 401.1, which would allow more than one principal structure on a lot, subject to site plan review or the subdivision regulations as applicable, and provided relevant life, safety, fire, and other requirements are met. Remove more than one main structure from section 304, table of uses. So we currently have commercial colocation in our zoning ordinance, and this would also allow for more than one residential structure on a lot, provided all this other stuff is met. And, I know "stuff" is not a technical term here, um, I will say from the side of, and perhaps Joseph, you can explain this a bit more, from the side of the town and Judy Barrett, our consultant, and the town council, we've gotten some, I guess, different recommendations about how it, what best practices would be in terms of how to regulate this. And do you want to say a few more words about that, Joseph?
Yeah, thank you. Like you said, or as we kind of discussed at the last meeting, prior to this, I shared all of the, everything that you see with the town's attorney and was able to get some legal guidance on it. So this was one amendment that he had a recommend, you know, sort of a substantive recommendation on. So as this is written today, it proposes buildings that are subject to site plan review be put through site plan review for multiple on a lot, but there was a discussion that it does not apply to detach single-family, two-family dwellings, which you can't subject to site plan review by statute. So there was some discussion about how we would regulate those types of developments. So an example might be like a cottage neighborhood with multiple, uh, single families on a lot, or something like that, but broadly speaking, site plan review can't be applied to a single family. So how do you regulate that? One initial, I think the initial thought was we would apply site, or subdivision, sorry, to those. However, the, the legal recommendation came back that that was not recommended as far as how to regulate those unless there is a change of ownership, such as condominiumizing or, or something like that. So the recommendation was to, if you want to regulate characteristics of those developments, such as landscaping, parking, you know, lighting, stormwater, the better way probably to do that, and this was what the attorney recommended, was to have a conditional use permit for that type of use, and then use your conditional use permit criteria to set those criteria for the development. Same that the planning board does today for accessory dwelling units, where you have that list of criteria and that's how those get reviewed, and then if there's a change in ownership, it goes, goes to subdivision anyway. So that, that was his recommendation, and I had shared that as well with the Barrett team, and I know Judy, I think, had some possible things for the board to consider based on that feedback. I think it's, you know, ultimately, board's policy decision what they want to do, but that was the, the recommendation.
In some ways, it seems like there are multiple possible legal avenues here, and our town attorney recommends one way, we've gotten some other guidance from other people in the state to go a different direction, and we have to decide which way to go forward. Either way, we're trying to do the same thing, it just, it's a question of how we regulate that through which process. Judy, do you want to chime in on this?
Yeah, sure. So what I was trying to do this afternoon in, in thinking about your town attorney's comments, was to say, well, if you go the conditional use permit, I know we need to have specific criteria. So I drafted a potential alternative here that lays out what the criteria would be for a conditional use permit in a situation where you have multiple residential structures, single-family structures on a lot, that for some reason would be under one ownership. And they're really just right out of the stuff you already have in your ordinance, it's, you know, the public safety, public health, minimizing curb cuts, I mean, just things that are already in your ordinance. The, the one thing I really care about making sure we cover in this is that if we're going to require a conditional use permit for a situation where you have multiple dwellings that are somehow not under, under separate ownership, that we don't put a cluster subdivision in a situation where now it has to get a conditional use permit, because those should be handled through subdivision, there's no question about that. So whatever change we make here, we need to make it clear that if it's multiple, multiple dwellings on a single lot that constitutes an OSRD, that that is still going to be handled through subdivision regulations. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Mostly, yeah.
Do you want me to screen share this? I can show you what I drafted if you want.
Please.
Yes.
Okay, so hold on.
Phil, just come back in, Chair.
That's it? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Just a minute. I've got too many things open here, here we go. We will get this again.
That's what she said earlier.
Can you see it?
I can relate.
And I will blow this up, hold on, I'll just get this to be larger type, so you can actually see it where you are.
It's okay, Phil.
Because I know it must be difficult. Are you able to see this?
Yes.
I don't know how hard it is, okay.
It's not on that one.
So, the beginning part of this looks just like what you already have.
No.
About multiple buildings on a single lot. I just restructured it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, I'm not in the room, so it's hard for me to read the cues, you look very small to me tonight. So, the first part of this is pretty much, is almost exactly what you have now in the proposed amendment, I simply added a second section, that you can grant a conditional use permit to place more than one single-family or two-family dwelling on a lot, provided that, because I know you need specific criteria for conditional use permit. So I simply laid out, you know, the lot has to meet the minimum lot area requirements, setbacks in circulation shall meet life safety minimums, just as they would for a commercial colocation. There would be a landscape buffer along a lot line, abutting of single-family, you know, single-family use. There's adequate water supply and sewage, again, this is all, already in your ordinance for other purposes. Not more than one curb cut, sufficient off-street parking, so that each unit will comply. And finally, that the proposed colocation is not an OSRD, because everything else in this is, the planning board will grant a conditional use permit if the project meets all these requirements, one, two, three, four, five, six, but you don't want to subject the OSRD to a, a conditional use permit, because that's going to get handled through subdivision. So that's how I tried to lay this out, and I think it accomplishes what your town attorney, you know, may have been concerned about, but at the same time preserves everything else that you're trying to do with OSRD.
So I need to clarify, so if someone wanted to do multiple residential units on a single lot, either way, they get a conditional use permit, and if they also wanted to, as they probably would in many cases, have those individual buildings separately owned, they'd also go through subdivision?
Well, they wouldn't even need a conditional use permit if it's going to be proposed as a cluster subdivision to begin with.
Well, if it's a cluster subdivision.
They just go to subdivision.
By cluster subdivision.
Cluster subdivision is a, is a, is a type of OSRD that does not involve lotting.
No, I, I, yeah, no, I'm just thinking, you could also do this without OSRD, though, and have multiple units on a single lot that you would get a CUP for, and then they might also be individually sold off as buildings, but not, but not within an OSRD model, in which case you get a CUP and a subdivision.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so if it's not an OSRD, then yes, it needs a conditional use permit, that's what this says.
Yeah, this, this makes sense to me. And in terms of like this broader, like reasons we're doing this, there may not be a lot of people who go for this, but it provides more options for developers to explore as they're trying to think about what their options are. There could definitely be some use cases.
Right.
And we talked about these at a previous meeting. So we have amended language here.
But ultimately, this is just a possible thing that the board can consider as an amendment to the amendment, is appropriate to do so. At this point, this isn't, this is just a possible recommendation that the board may choose to consider, based on that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to help solve a problem.
Thank you.
You know, you could do this more simply than I did, but.
I mean, it does seem like there are multiple ways of handling this, and if we can do, if we can follow one that makes our town attorney happy, that would probably be not a bad idea.
Yeah, I would just run this by your town attorney.
So the only issue there is, if the town attorney says to change anything before it makes it to the next meeting, I mean, I guess, I mean, ultimately, if this becomes a headache, we could always table it for another year, but if it looks, and if it looks good to the town attorney, then we just bring it to the next hearing as is and see what we think.
Mm-huh. Yeah.
If we can get, if we can time it right, I'd say we should, we should try and replace this adjusted, amended section 14 in the amendment, and if it doesn't work, then yeah, we just have to hold on to it. I mean, we don't have a choice.
Right.
And as it is, I think that we're asking a lot this, this time around, so.
So, we need more time to think about this, or?
We can think while there's a public hearing, I mean, while we.
Oh, does, do any members of our dwindling public, I think it's very late, want to make any comments on this amendment?
Explain what it is.
It would allow for multiple residential buildings on a single lot, like, so currently we allow multiple commercial buildings on a single lot, and this would allow for multiple residential buildings on a single lot, which does have a few different use cases, and.
Without subdivision.
And what we're, and, we are, what we're talking about is a question of, without subdividing the actual lot, and to do that, would you go through subdivision regs, would you go through, what we're talking about here is doing it through conditional use permit, but if still, if you wanted to not subdivide the lot, but divide the buildings and sell them off within a commonly-owned lot, that would need to go through a subdivision still.
Aye.
As with condominium.
Yeah.
Would this lead to the overdevelopment of a single-family lot? They, they still have to meet the area requirements.
Right.
It says they're diminished here, though. Sorry, say that again. It says that they're diminished. Areas and setbacks are diminished, it says.
You would, you would need a pretty large lot to do this, and you would still need to follow internally all the other setbacks and such, so it wouldn't lead to an incredibly higher density necessarily by doing this. What's that? It might be a little bit higher, but it wouldn't be, in my math, anyway, a lot higher. Joseph?
It would be subject to the, the standards in that particular, underlying zoning district.
Yes.
So if it was in the ag zone, it would need to follow the ag.
Yeah, and if it was in a single-family, which I guess is the question here, it would, a lot of those dimensional requirements would apply internally to that lot. That's my understanding, yes?
That would be my understanding, it's like the lot size, additional square footage per unit.
And setbacks within the lot.
Yeah.
Not just to the lot boundaries.
Yes.
Well, are we ready for a motion of some sort?
I use mine up for the night.
I do.
The public may have comments on the original.
Joseph's gonna have to do it.
I did ask if any public had any comments on this, and I haven't heard anything yet. Well, Dave had a question.
So the motion would be to move amendment six with.
Yes.
With the amended language.
With the amended language for section 401.1, multiple buildings on a single lot, as shared by Judy Barrett.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Don't ask for too much conflict in the rest of the state.
Okay.
This is a new concept.
Yeah.
It might be overreaching.
So.
So this just gets us to the next hearing, though. So this is not a commitment.
So one of the things we thought at the beginning of this meeting, you heard was, we didn't really want to pull any amendments ideally at this meeting, unless, we wanted to make any changes that were necessary for a second public hearing, this way we could hear like everybody's feedback, it might come to both hearings. So it, it may get pulled next meeting, who knows? We'll see. So, I was just about to take the vote, so we have a motion in a second, and I sounded like no further comments or questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so this motion passes, this will go to our next public hearing in January. Wait a second.
Amendment seven.
Where are my notes?
Page 15, amendment seven.
No, I, I got this.
It's in green.
Okay. Trying to keep all my papers in order here. Okay, so amendment seven, article three, section 304, and article five, so I'm just gonna read the hearing notice again. Amendment section 304 and article five to remove the current open space residential district requirements and replace with a reference to a new set of open space residential district standards, that will be housed in article nine of the Plymouth subdivision regulations. And section 304, remove the reference to cluster residential development and footnotes to the table and uses in area dimensions to refer to article nine of the Plymouth subdivision regulations, and create a new definition for open space residential district accordingly in article two. So what this basically does, and we've seen bits and pieces of this coming through some of the other amendments, is it takes the open space residential development regulations out of our zoning ordinance and places them within subdivision regulations, and we've had, and we've, tonight.
No, thank you.
We've had some discussions over why that would be a beneficial change, and so just to clarify and remind everyone, right, we're not talking about doing away with open space residential development, for a lot of people who are looking the like, but change how it's regulated, taking it out of the zoning ordinance, putting it in the subdivision regulations. And what that will entail is adopting a new set of subdivision regulations separately, which include the open space residential district guidelines and regulations, and we have, and you should have all received from Barrett Planning, a draft of what that might look like, and I will just say that I think it's a really good idea to look at that draft as, with some potential changes, as a path forward. On the other hand, it's the board's prerogative to. On the other hand, it's the board's prerogative to just cut and paste and stick them in the subdivision regulations as well, although I wouldn't necessarily recommend that. I say all this not to dissuade us from making changes to them, just to say, that's not what we're doing here. That's a separate discussion where we talk about what we want those regulations to look like in our subdivision regulations. Right now, we're simply talking about not what they look like, but just moving them. And whether or not we want to follow that practice that's recommended of moving them. Any comments on the board before we open public, or we'll open it to the public?
My only question is that there are multiple places where we refer to Article nine of the Plymouth subdivision regulations, and in my experience, subdivision regulations can be changed and rewritten by the board, but if we're referring to a specific article in the zoning ordinance, changing the zoning ordinance can be challenging. I'm wondering if we can just strike the reference to Article nine and just leave it as the Plymouth subdivision regulations. What do you think about that, Judy?
Sure, sure, you could do that. I was trying to be very specific, so...
No, I know, but if we rewrite it and something else becomes Article nine, it's hard to change the zoning ordinance, right?
Fair enough.
That's true, yeah, you can, you can delete the reference to Article nine, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, I'm very much in support of this.
And in fact, we are talking about maybe looking at a subdivision regulations anyway. So perhaps if those do change, we don't have to have another amendment for the zoning ordinance again, so it's good to think about that, yeah.
Oh, wait, that's another whole conversation.
Not tonight.
We're not gonna dig back into those regulations.
So are there comments or questions from the public?
Online?
That would be included. Anybody online want to speak up about this? Oh, okay. I entertain a motion.
I've made my motion, someone else has to...
So moved for the amendment.
Okay, so Sue made a motion.
I'll second. Thank you, Sue.
You have a second? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of moving this to public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions, okay? So this motion passes, and this goes through our next public hearing in January.
And that is with the striking of Article nine?
Yes, and that was mentioned by Sue.
Yeah.
All right, amendment eight. Judy?
Can I just make one small comment?
Yes.
If we're going to remove that reference to Article nine...
Oh, it's elsewhere as well.
We should just make, it's in the footnotes to the dimensional tables, just referring people, so just to be consistent, we should just say Plymouth subdivision regulations throughout.
Yes.
That makes sense.
That was, that was...
Yeah.
And that's an administrative change, I don't think we need another motion for that, and... Good, okay.
Just trying to make it consistent.
That's, oh, thank you, thank you.
Good catch.
No problem.
And that was our intention, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, amendment number eight, Article three, zones, maps, and regulations. Amend Article... Amend Article three, the zoning map, and Article fourteen to create a fairgrounds road residential overlay district, which will preserve the underlying zoning while allowing the dimensional requirements of the single-family residential zone and allowing single-family detached, single-family attached as permitted uses. This would overlay portions of the agricultural and highway commercial districts, roughly, mostly agricultural, roughly covering land along both sides of fairground roads stretching west from Main Street to the old fairground site and as far north as the Plymouth Town boundary. So we're trying to create more housing opportunities in that area of town so described there. And allow for basically similar dimensional requirements and mostly uses of single-family zoning in that area. And as an overlay, just as a reminder, and it says that right here, you could still use, for example, ag zone, zoning if it's in the ag zone. But if you want to take advantage of, let's say, the dimensional requirements of the single-family residential zone, you also have to follow everything else from the overlay district, for example, for uses. So you can't mix an ag use and a overlay residential, dimensional requirement.
So if I could just point one thing out, the version that is in your public notice, the code structure seems to have fallen apart. So you have paragraphs under 304.3, but, but nothing is numbered, and that's because when this, I guess, I mean, I have a numbered version, but apparently somehow what was posted lost the code structure. So I would just say, I should just send this to Joseph again with everything properly numbered. There's no substantive change in the text, but just making sure things are numbered correctly. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
So we can move this forward tonight to the second hearing and include that for the next hearing.
That would, that would be an administrative change.
Yes. Exactly, well, I just want you to be aware of that.
So I can say it again, we can move the fraud forward.
The fraud? Oh, dear God.
I would move that we move amendment eight to the second public hearing.
I don't think we've had a public hearing yet.
Well, are there comments?
Actually, this is actually what I did stick around for, and this might be out of the purview of this particular board, but...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my motion then.
The way, yeah, and I don't want to, my eyes are glazed over, and you guys might have, this might be discussed or self-evident, and I'm just clueless about it, but it would seem like if this passes, that it's like a double-edged sword windfall for the people who own property here. Because suddenly, they potentially have a much more valuable piece of property if they do choose to develop it or subdivide it, or sell it, to someone who intends to do that. And then likewise, I mean, obviously, property taxes are how we do things in New Hampshire, and that's a big part of why we're having this conversation. But by the same token, if there's some old family land that's been in the family forever and they want to keep it, there's eventually going to be some tax reassessment, revaluation, like we just had, where those people are now sitting on a much more valuable property, and it might become, you know, a burden for them. So I just didn't know if this is something where like you choose to opt in to the overlay or you choose to not opt in to the overlay, like a current use type of thing? Or like, I mean, I just don't quite know.
So to clarify, you can't opt out of being part of the overlay. If you want to develop anything new, then you have the option of either sticking with the current zoning, so we're not taking anything away from anyone, or using the new zoning. But you don't get to say, I'm not part of the overlay. But if you want to develop anything new, you get to choose one or the other.
You can't do agricultural uses anymore if you choose to develop it as a single-family residential.
You can build a single-family in the...
You can use the minimum lot sizes.
Well, yes, correct.
If, but if you want to use the lot sizes of the single-family residential, which is overlay uses, then you can't put agricultural uses within lots in the single-family area dimensions.
We're talking about agriculture zone uses, not agriculture, little anything.
Well, I just, I actually chose agriculture as a, as an example of a use, but...
So can I ask a clarifying question about your concern?
Yeah, sure.
So Mike, what I'm gathering is you're, you're worried that there's a potential economic impact to the property owners and that...
Correct, in both directions, in both directions. And then also, like, I think about it from the aspect of small-town headbutting, that there might be some people who might be unwilling to vote for this because they think that these people are getting a benefit that the rest of the town is not getting. I mean, I think that could be, it could be portrayed that way, whether that's accurate or not.
And just, and just to explain our reasoning for choosing this particular area over, over others, we did a lot of engagement for the master plan, but also then for this housing project, to try to identify areas in town where there are opportunities for more development and creating more housing that we need. And we tried to focus on places that had utilities, like water and sewer, which Fairgrounds has. And that, where this would kind of fit into...
Character?
Character to some extent, in some, in some ways it does, and in some ways it does. There is a lot of development out there already of residential uses. But also, let's like listen to people and where they would like to see more housing, and this is one of the identified areas. Another identified area that we're looking at is the Tenny Mountain area, which we didn't get together for this year, and it's a lot anyway, but we're still looking at that. So that, that's, we're not, just to clarify for like public reasons, we're not like randomly choosing an area and saying, you get something.
I watched, I watched the housing.
Yeah.
I understand, I just...
Okay.
And I assume other communities have done this type of thing before, and it's...
It's part of encouraging development that there are these impacts.
Sure.
Can, can we get back to the concern about larger, I mean, the example was a larger family-owned property that might be then increased in value to the point where the property taxes become unmanageable? I'm just trying to gauge the reality of that being, being a threat for property owners out there.
I see, I do, there are, I mean, just looking at the size of the lots in there, there are some potentials, but you know, anything that's over 10 acres can be in current use, and then it's taxed at its current value.
And I will say also...
That is, that is a functional tool for parcels that are 10 acres or larger.
I would also point out that with most of these changes, changes, like, changes to an ordinance, actual changes to the built environment and that actually start to have those impacts you're talking about where, like, a lot of developers want to rush in there, it's, it's usually a pretty slow process. I mean, you can never know for sure.
Right.
But I, I very much doubt like everybody's property values would double next year or something.
You know, I would bet that there will be at least one person who lives here who's gonna dangle their property out there to see what they can get. And then from there, it becomes a comp for something else. So I mean, I don't have concerns, it's not really, I don't have skin in the game in any way.
And none of us have a crystal, and none of us have a crystal ball to know. I saying it probably won't happen doesn't guarantee anything, of course. And I'm not saying it won't happen like nothing will happen, we want something to happen, but I just don't think necessarily it's gonna be a mad rush usually, from previous experiences, you know, yeah.
I think if you changed...
Go ahead, Judy.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good, go ahead.
I think if you re-zoned this to single-family residential. So now the base zoning becomes the basis, or the redundancy, for determining value view from an appraisal point of view. That's very different from an overlay. The way, at least in my experience, the way appraisers look at overlay as a, as a standard for trying to figure out highest and best use is very different from what the base zoning is. So I would, I could understand the comment if we were coming to the town to say, let's rezone this area as single-family residential, but that's not what we're doing in this article. So I just think it's important to understand that.
Thank you for the clarification.
My thought, you know, along with what, what John said earlier is that, you know, the intent of this is not to impart value or, or cost to anyone, it's really looking at appropriate development, and that's one of the few areas of town that is, seems like it could support more housing. And, you know, it's not something that we can put in place without the authority of town. So it's a vote of town, and everybody has a say in this, right?
I just want to add before we make a motion of any sort, do we want to add into potential uses two-family? Which we talked about at some point, it didn't make it in, and we talked about adding it in last minute, but it would kind of screw up the process. At this point, do we want to add two-family as a use within those dimensional requirements of the overlay?
I think I am not in any position to make decisions right now. I think, I feel like I'm, my, I'm a little tired, so I feel like adding lots of...
I mean, if we're allowing...
How would, how would that differ from single-family dwelling attached not exceeding two units?
It could have a single entrance? Or be stacked two-family?
Actually, Fairgrounds Road is really high-density housing at this time.
It is.
This would allow for higher density than it exists there.
I, I don't see a huge value in adding two-family.
I'm just saying, it wouldn't be a big change to add it in at this point.
Most two-families I've seen are separate emissions anyway, they're single-family attached.
I'm just saying, it would be like an extra line in two words.
Yeah.
If we want to add it in.
Uh-huh, your call.
So I thought the point was to try to align this with single-family residential. So if you're gonna change single-family residential to...
True.
Not allow the, the attached single-family, do you want to take it out here? I mean, it's just an informational question for the board to think about.
I personally do not want to take it out here, I think it's more in character here than it might be in the single-family residential.
That's just a policy question, just wanted to be clear.
I actually agree that it's more appropriate to have the single-family attached here. I mean, you're more likely to see new construction in this area, I think, whereas in the single-family residential, I was more concerned about people converting existing single families to...
So I would say we keep the single-family attached. And do we want two-family, just in case somebody wants to call it that, and it's in two words extra, like...
Sure. So add a fifth column of two-family?
Sure.
Yep.
Or add a, add a fifth character under use regulations, the following uses shall be permitted.
In the fraud.
Number five, two-family residential.
That's what I'm doing.
All right.
So I have...
So there was a motion to amend. Do we have a second?
What, what were you saying?
Well, I just have, the whole intent, Nick, is to not interfere with agricultural that's going on in that area, rather than trying to just make it single-family zone. Yet, if they, if we do go to zoning that would allow something similar to the single-family zone, and if we go that route with that parcel, we lose all the benefits of being able to have a horse on the lot with our home. We lose the ability to have goats and...
Roosters.
How so?
Roosters, or whatever, so we lose...
No, you don't.
How do you, how do you explain it?
Because it's an overlay, you could stay with what the agricultural zone already allows.
So that's, so that's what...
Yeah.
So, so...
Or you can, you can meet the requirements for...
Right, so if you go with one...
The base zoning doesn't change.
If you want a goat, that's fine, you just can't use the lot size of single-family residential.
Yeah, it's only, it's only the area dimensions that change.
You can still have a goat, you just need more square footage to have that goat. Or a rooster, or whatever.
So if you take advantage of your parcel and do four, five very small lots, 10,000 square feet, and then you have one right next to it that's two acres, and then you have another one on the other side, I'm just wondering whether, because that subdivision is using the single-family, could that person then have a horse if they wanted?
On the two-acre lot?
On the two-acre lot.
So I, so my, my thinking is that even if you go with a small lot, let's say a 10,000-square-foot lot, I don't think, there's no use prohibition there, so if you wanted to have a rooster that's prohibited in the single-family, you could still do that there.
So wait, 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 wait.
I think you have...
No.
Am I, am I wrong there?
If you follow these, you, you have to follow the uses outlined here, which is just these uses, and...
So, sorry. If you're going to use the overlay to develop the property...
It's an interesting question, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Because...
What is it?
Or is it, yeah, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out Phil's question. So, you have...
Can I say?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it's an interesting question.
Can you subdivide a lot into stuff that could be agriculture and stuff, and then to the next development along? Did they get that choice too, or did you make the subdivision choice under the single-family? So then you can't have your goat farm...
Exactly.
I would say, and Judy, you can correct me, if one of those lots is large enough to meet the requirements of the ag zone, let's say, that particular lot can still be following ag zone uses. But anything that doesn't meet ag zone lot size requirements has to follow residential requirements.
I don't, it's not explicitly stated that way.
That lot didn't need the overlay to exist.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
But if you were to go with...
The legal existence of that lot is not based on the overlay.
But let's say, let's say something that's prohibited in the single-family zone, like, like having a rooster. If, I don't think there's anything in this that says, you know, it's, it's specific about the density and dimensional regulations. You could use the single-family density, but there's no prohibitions about uses. There's, I mean, it only address dimensional off-street parking signs, relationship with overlay districts.
The following uses shall be permitted in the fraud.
Can I have, can I have a rooster in the single-family residential district?
No, but you can have chickens.
You can have up to... You can have up to, what, 10?
Chickens.
10 hens?
Wait till we talk about chickens for chicken rights.
No, you can't have a rooster.
I don't
So, so like a rooster is something you can't have in a single-family residential, but could you be, basically have a small parcel, like you'd have a single-family residential in this overlay, but still have agricultural uses like a rooster or a horse?
No.
Well, you can say that if you want.
When the provisions
But we said
I mean, this is about
Go ahead, Judy.
You have to decide what uses you want to allow in this district.
So, yeah, I don't, I mean, from what I'm reading, I don't see anything that applies to uses. It really only says that you can use the dimensional, density and dimensional regulations, off-street parking and signs.
It's still the ag-zone.
But then, it says you can't have the benefit of the ag-zone
Yes.
if you do that.
But where does it say that? It doesn't say that.
Judy has said it.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think what's here says that.
The uses
That's my, I'm challenging that, I don't think that's true.
If you use any portion of your lot parcel to turn it into a single-family residential, your whole parcel is not single-family.
I don't think so.
That's not what we're saying.
No, I mean, I think it's basically just saying you can continue to use it as an agricultural, all the agricultural uses, it's just that you can, you can make, you can make a smaller lot.
1,000 square foot.
I think so.
Can I just remind everyone?
Wait, wait, wait.
Can I just remind everyone?
Is that right, Judy?
Can I remind everyone for a moment that it is 5:10 in our
Yeah.
Sherry, we'll soon, we'll soon, we'll soon, no, 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 that's
Questions.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to ask you to leave. We, we have a rule in our own bylaws about 10 o'clock.
Right.
And we can go beyond 10, but we have to have a motion to do that.
Any talking that you do to me or I do to you is just slowing it down a little bit, so
No, no, stay.
No, no, don't, don't worry.
I just want to clarify, I'm not asking
The good news is if we, if we move this
I just want to say we need
I'll come on the floor.
So I, I mentioned this because if we go over, we need a motion to go over very shortly, because Judy, in our bylaws, we don't go, we don't go past 10 o'clock.
I make a motion that if we need to, we go over our 10 o'clock limit.
I'll second.
Joseph wants to
Wait, can we deal with this motion first? Do we have, we have any further discussion about that?
We wouldn't do that.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? This is a good one for the courses, right? Okay, so the motion passes.
We have a quorum if anybody wants to leave.
Joseph wants to explain the, the rules for the ag-zone as they pertain to this Fairgrounds Road overlay district.
Yeah, well, my understanding, like, like Judy said, so there's that part that says use regulations, "The following uses shall be permitted in the F R R O D."
Where are we?
So this is on page 16, the second paragraph up from the bottom. So it says, "Those uses are permitted in the F R R O D." So it's, I believe what Judy was saying was that if you subdivided a lot out that met the dimensional requirements of the F R R O D, you could use those use, you could do those uses on it under the F R R O D, but it wouldn't impact a lot that's under the ag-zone requirements that would meet the ag-zone dimensional requirements.
Right.
So that was my understanding of
So I guess, I guess, if I understand Phil's question, going back to chickens, it doesn't say here you can have up to 10 chickens, which is one of the uses that's allowed, for example, a single-family residential.
It's not a use.
But it's not a use, but would you be allowed to have 10 chickens? Would you be allowed to have 10 chickens here? And, and what legal parameters would allow you to have 10 chickens but not a rooster, just like you have in a single-family residential?
My argument is that the underlying zoning, which may be agricultural, still applies even if you make a smaller lot, which might only be applicable in the single-family residential.
That's not what this says, though.
I don't think that's true.
That's not what this says.
I don't, I disagree. So, I, I mean, doesn't, doesn't, I mean, we're not changing the zoning, so any, all we're doing is allowing, in the fraud, we're allowing, you know, accessory dwelling units, open space residential development, area dimensions shall be in accordance with 304.2 for single-family residential.
Development
So, so, I mean, we're basically saying we can have a 10,000 square foot
Farm, no.
Parcel, parcel, there's no limitation.
Applicability, development of this land within the fraud may be undertaken subject to the requirements of this section 304.3, which includes a bunch of use regulations.
Okay.
Or by complying with all the applicable requirements of the underlying district.
Of the underlying district.
All right, all right, so, so, yep.
So it's one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
You don't get to do both.
That's how an overlay works.
Subject to the requirements of
Where's that line?
Applicability, so it's purposes established in a district and applicability.
Thank you, I missed that.
I need that line. Is that in the middle of that paragraph or where?
The first, first sentence.
First sentence, under applicability.
May be undertaken subject to the requirements of this section or by complying with all applicable requirements of the underlying, or
Underlying.
Either or, not both.
Residential is 3.3.
So if you do make, start making some small lots, they can't have roosters.
No.
They would not be able to.
Or goats.
And they couldn't have a goat or a horse.
No. You might be next to someone who has a goat, like you might build next to Claire's with goats and cows and stuff like that, but you're not
But isn't this a choice someone makes?
Yeah, it is.
Isn't this a choice someone makes to either
Yeah, and that's fine, they can make that choice.
We're just trying to get clarity, we're just trying to figure this all out, we're not arguing.
Sure.
We're just trying to figure out what
Yeah, I mean, if someone wants, if someone wants to continue to use their property as agricultural, no one's going to take that away from them.
And if you do build within the dimensional requirements, a single-family within the zone, you know what you're getting into, which is you might have a farm next to it.
Yeah, or a market basket.
You never know.
Absolutely.
Indeed.
Or three more storage units.
Very good point.
Because they're hot.
Indeed.
It'd be kind of cool that they could have a little mini-farm on a
Farms on Fairgrounds Road.
Quarter acre.
I'm surprised you were
You can't, you can't, sorry.
Mini-farms have all sorts of sanitation issues and stuff like that, which would be like really hard to stick in a small subdivision.
But you wouldn't be able to do that because that's an agricultural use, that you'd be on quarter acre.
Mike is saying, wouldn't it be cool?
Oh, wouldn't it be cool, you're not
So what happens if they take a 60-acre lot and do 15 lots that are half, are quarter acre, and then they do a couple of big lots that are two-acre, and then do some more quarter-acre lots?
So the quarter-acre lots are all subject to single-family residential uses, and then the big lots are subject to agricultural use.
Is that how we all interpret it?
I interpret it
So they'd have to use it, so the quarter-acre lots would be in the overlay.
Okay, and then the, the bigger lots that's in the subdivision
Can be base zone.
Would be ag, could be ag-zone then.
Yeah, it would probably be easier to do two subdivisions.
Yeah, because they don't need, they don't need the overlay to do that.
Yeah.
Not the agriculture, if you say agricultural, right?
You can still have a dairy farm in the overlay.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
And you, and you, not, not only a grandfathered one, but a new one.
Judy looks perplexed, what do you need to say?
But not a quarter-acre one.
So it sounds like a mixed, you could do a mixed subdivision of overlay and non-overlay.
In theory, if someone wanted to do that, I can imagine that being fine, as long as you're, I think as long as you're actually subdividing the lots and not just subdividing the ownership of a large lot.
So let's say that the guy that came through with the storage units makes his subdivision with some quarter-acre lots, and in part of it, he's got his ag-zone storage units.
If he wants to do that and people want to move in next to a storage unit, that's fine, I guess.
I almost think it would be easier to do two subdivisions in that case. Split the lots, so you've got the one that you're going to do one overlay.
Let's not get into like individual cases here, but
Yeah.
It is 10 o'clock.
Might be better than having neighbors.
It sounds like we all understand what is going, what's going on here now.
As long as it's explained so that it will be understood in the regulations.
So my only question, in looking for clarity around this, is under applicability, where it says, "Development of land within the fraud may be undertaken subject to the requirements of this section 304.3," I'm wondering if it should say, "Subject to all requirements of 304.3." Just to make it clear that you can't pick and choose, it has to, you have to go whole boat, like, does that make sense?
I get that, although
You can do that if you want.
The attorney has looked at it, and I don't think, call that out, but
I don't think, I, I mean, I
I don't know if it matters one way or another.
I didn't realize that you had such restrictions on agriculture.
Chickens, on chickens in the single-family zone?
No, roosters.
Yeah, roosters, roosters, I'm surprised.
Well, I mean, that was last year's zoning change, there were
That was a hot one.
Technically, you know, chickens were not allowed
Wow.
in the single-family residential zones, and people were complaining because there were roosters, so we made an exception that you could have up to
10.
10 hens, but no roosters.
We actually had a lot of people.
Is it like the most exciting amendment ever?
Talk about it.
Anyhow, how do we feel about this?
I love my
So it does say, "Developments proceeding under this section, the overlay, shall be